It's definitely a delay there.
So, prior to the roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion, if not the whole, of this Planning Commission meeting is being conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, in that Commissioner Angela Harper-Petersen is at the Grand Hyatt Kauai Resort and Spa at 1571 Poipu Road Business Center, Koloa, Hawaii, USA, 96756. And she is participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. And Angela, can you confirm that you've posted the -- oh, actually, I'll get to that in a second. It would now be appropriate to conduct the roll call, please.
Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Here.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Here.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. And I would now ask that Commissioner Harper-Petersen respond to the following questions. Can you hear me well?
Yes, I can hear you.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now?
Yes, I have been able to hear the whole.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes, I have.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public, lava aside, such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes, we can.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address the agenda item, any agenda item for this meeting?
No, there is not.
Has anyone at the day who's been unable to hear Ms. Harper-Petersen?
No.
All right. Hearing --
Excuse me, through the chair.
Yeah.
If at any time that the commission cannot hear Commissioner Harper-Petersen, please let me know. The phone is right next to me, and I can repeat what she said.
Absolutely. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all commission members present have indicated that they were able to hear Commissioner Harper-Petersen clearly. So with that, the next item on the agenda is public comment. This item of public comment is intended to cover items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general practice is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, the next item is item five, approval of the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
No changes.
Okay, then I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. So the next item is the consent calendar, which has one item. The way the consent calendar works is there is no presentation and there is no discussion. We had an opportunity to review it in advance. Now, if anyone would like to discuss it or has questions for staff, we can always remove it from the consent calendar, but unless there is someone who so indicates, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Through the chair, can you repeat the commissioner who made the motion and the second, please?
The first was Mr. Gutierrez, and I believe the second was Mr. Bradley.
And the matter we are voting on?
Approving the consent item.
Thank you. Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. Okay, moving on. And I'm assuming that most folks here are not here for the approval of the one-way freeway-oriented sign. That will probably take -- oh, all right, fantastic. For the rest of the folks, I'm assuming it'll probably take about 15 minutes or so. So I'm going to begin by reading the procedure for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation, may make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further evident -- excuse me, no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We ask that speakers fill out a speakers form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. We also ask that speakers come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. Both these items will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Does staff have a brief presentation on Two Circle Star Way, consideration of design review, approval of one freeway-oriented sign wall-mounted internally illuminated?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Doesn't have to be brief, Jill.
It can be as long as you like.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'm presenting on behalf of Lisa Costa-Sanders. The proposal is a request for design review approval for a, for one 158-square-foot wall-mounted sign that is visible from Highway 101. So this property is located at the southern end of the city, pretty close to the Redwood City border, as you could see from the zoning map in the middle. There's an aerial and also a view of Two Circle Star Way from the parking lot. According to Plan Development Ordinance 1230, which this property is subject to, this ordinance governs the two office buildings as well as the hotel immediately to the north. So there is 2,519 square foot of total signage allotted for the development. The existing wall-mounted sign for SoftBank is 103 square feet. The existing four signs for the Extended Stay Hotel, total 319 square feet. The proposed sign is four feet in height and 34 feet, two inches in length, with a center logo that is seven feet, four inches in height. The total sign area is 158 square feet. Individual channel letters are proposed, with white for the lettering and bright green for the logo. All signs, so that would include SoftBank, Extended Stay, and the new Opportune, cumulatively total 580 square feet, which is well below the maximum of 2,519. So staff amended the formal motion to add in the APN. I'm available for any questions you may have of me, and I believe the applicant is also here.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
No.
None for me.
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the applicant wish to speak to the item?
I'm with Thomas One Sign Company. I will actually be the installer on the sign. The sign will be manufactured by Opportune's National Sign Company, and I really don't have much more to add, except would you like a job? I could really -- very well done, so thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. Any discussion among the commission?
No.
And, yes, sir?
I'm usually opposed to signs in general, but specifically when they're a distraction on a freeway, but it is a handsome sign.
Anything from you, Angela?
No, I don't have any particular comment. It seems that it's below the required sign coverage, so it works for me.
All right, then I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Move, I move. How about this? I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for design review approval of approximately 158 square feet for Opportune at Two Circle Star Way, APN 046-240-180, based on the required findings and for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. All right. Congratulations. Okay, so we're going to move on to the study session, and I just wanted to make some prefatory comments. So first, I just want to observe that we are all, all of us, San Carlin's, some people say San Carlosians. There's a debate as to which one is a better way to put it, but all four of us and Angela on the phone, we're all volunteers. We're all citizens of San Carlos. You're all citizens of San Carlos. I recognize that the issues are issues that people care a lot about. It's hard to care about something more than your home, but I do ask that everyone keep it polite. I prefer that folks don't clap, and the reason for that is there may be people here who disagree with you, and they may be in the minority, but if everyone's clapping, it makes it less comfortable for other people to say what they have to say. Obviously, you do whatever you think is right. That's just my preference. You know, I'd observe that I generally, my general philosophy is everybody's usually doing the best that they can. Now, you don't necessarily have to think their best, the best they can is good enough for you, but I do know that staff and everyone who has worked on these has tried very hard, so I'd ask that you keep that in mind when you make your comments. Next, I just want to observe from a process standpoint, this is a study session, so we're not going to decide anything today. Theoretically, I suppose if everybody convinced us that we should just do something completely different, currently there's a, the next step is, at our next meeting, we would actually consider potentially approving some version of the recommendations that are being presented today, but other than that, nothing is going to be decided today. We're going to hear what staff has to say, we're going to hear what you have to say, but if we run out of time for some reason, you can always come back the next time. And so the process is study session today. We would theoretically approve some version or consider some version of the recommendations at another meeting, and then that recommendation would ultimately go to the city council, and the city council can do whatever it wants. It can take our recommendation, it can modify it, it can do whatever it wants. And then next, and I don't mean to offend anybody, although I can often do that accidentally, I encourage everyone to try and listen to the presentation that staff makes, and I say that for two reasons. One is, not all of us are public speakers, and some folks plan on speaking today, and it's going to be very tempting to be thinking about what you want to say throughout the presentation. That is very natural, especially for people who don't speak all the time. It's very hard to think and listen at the same time, or so I'm told frequently. So the second part is, you know, I've already seen a number of comments in writing from folks, you know, who's, and the thrust of the comments are, "Don't do this, don't pass this, we want smaller houses." I mean, and I'm oversimplifying. There's nothing wrong with that, but I have previewed these recommended changes, and they will result in smaller houses than we have now. So when someone gets up and says, "Don't do this, we want smaller houses," to me, and I'm just speaking for myself, that's not super helpful, because these recommendations will result in smaller houses, so if we don't do this, the houses will actually continue to be as big as they are now. Now, you know, you could say, "Well, you know, we're afraid that if you do this, then, you know, this will all be over, and then the houses will never get any smaller." You know, that's a fair concern for folks to have, and if you want to present that concern, that's fine, but nothing that we do, and obviously not today, but nothing that we do is set in stone, just like the standards that we're reviewing today are only, I believe, seven years old. So at any point, we could change again. We could look and see what we've just done and say, "Wow, we did a terrible thing," and change it yet again, or make small -- so my point is, is that you saying, "No, I don't like something," certainly is not, it certainly is information for us, but for me, in general, it's more helpful if you say, "You know what? I wish, you know, this is okay, I think you could do better, and I would like you to do X, Y, and Z." Let's see, and then last, you know, I will, there have been a number of comments that I've seen regarding protecting views and sun. And I fully expect, and I do not discourage anybody from making whatever comments they want to make, including that these proposed changes do not protect views and sun. First of all, that's correct. Based on what I've observed, these proposed standards do not protect views and sun. I will also say that it is extremely unusual for a city or a municipality to protect views and sun. It's extremely unusual. There are only a couple of municipalities that I know of in California that do it, and as far as I know, they don't actually, what they, they don't actually do it by changing design standards. What they do is they do it by requiring that, like shrubbery and those sorts of things be eliminated or limited if they impinge on views or sun. And again, philosophically, people can feel very differently about that. The problem with protecting views and sun, and again, I'm just speaking for myself, is that benefits folks who already have two-story homes, and basically functionally prohibits anyone who doesn't already have a two-story home from having a two-story home. Now, ultimately, I suppose that folks could do that. Luckily, I will never be asked to make that decision, because I only have three meetings to go, and if that's the direction that, if that's the direction that the city goes, it'll be someone other than me who's voting on it, but I can say, since I won't ever have to vote on it, that I would never support it anyway. So with that, does anyone else have any prefatory things they want to say? All right, so I believe staff has a presentation.
We do. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Al Sevay, I'm the Community Development Director, and Lisa Porus, our principal planner, will talk about the process a little bit in just a moment, and Stefan Pellegrini will talk about the Shack recommendation. So city staff and the consultant are going to talk a little bit this evening before we take public comment, but the, I would like to just say a few words before we get started. And the initial charge of this effort was to look for ways to reduce the size and mass of homes. That was the charge by the city council, and when we started to look at ways and look at the issue, we had to find out what it is exactly that made a house look so big and why. What are the things that make houses look big? And what the Single Family House Advisory Committee determined was that it wasn't just about how many square feet a house was. In fact, you can reduce the amount of square footage of a home, but the home could still look big, and we'll be talking about the reasons for that tonight. Tonight, what we're going to do is begin explaining how our current code works and how it results in large new homes and additions in our community, and how these proposed changes from the Shack could reduce house size. And since we had our community meeting on May 2nd, we received lots of community feedback, which is a very good thing, and we would encourage all of you to continue to be engaged in this process. Now, some of the things that we've heard are that the proposed standards that you will be hearing about tonight don't go far enough, that our standards should match other cities, and that these ideas don't limit square footage as much as some of the other cities in San Mateo County and elsewhere do, that these ideas don't protect neighbors' views and privacy, that local architects believe the recommendations would not reduce house size, that the process is moving too fast, and that these proposals don't address the design review process itself. So those are just some of the things that we've heard, and we're going to try and address some of those issues. Now, I can tell you that I've been doing zoning for longer than I care to admit, and while I can say that as a result of doing all these years of zoning, what I recognize, and even for me and even for city staff, it takes a long time for this to sink in. This is complicated. This is complicated material for anyone. And the Single Family House Advisory Committee had a considerable amount of time to look at these issues and develop these ideas that are before you this evening. And so the next step, and the step that we're in now, is to work with the planning commission and spend time with the planning commission and all of you, and all interested people, so that we can at least understand what's on the table tonight. I think that's the key thing from a staff perspective, is that we are going to try to help everybody to understand at least what is being looked at right now. And I think once that we spend some time really digging into all these ideas, that you will find that the result would be, if these were implemented, that there would be smaller and more compact homes. However, I will also say that there's room for new ideas, and there's room for changes. In terms of how fast the process is going, we should take the time we need as a community, as a planning commission, and city council to come up with some good recommendations moving forward. But in the meantime, I would say, and perhaps most importantly, I would ask that we all keep an open mind this evening. And I assure you that myself, city staff, will keep an open mind as well. And so with those opening remarks, I will pass it off to Lisa.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Chair Silberman, planning commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Lisa Porus, principal planner for the city of San Carlos. And I have just two slides that I wanted to cover with the commission and the public before we turn it over to Stefan Pellegrini with Opticos. And really, my purpose for sort of pausing before we get started is to explain the process that has occurred since this project's inception. A lot of folks are wondering how this began, you know, where are we now? And how fast is this moving? And where did all of this come from? So I wanted to just take a minute to pause and explain how we arrived to this point tonight. Around, I would say, maybe this really began coming to the surface and being a commonly heard public concern was probably around 2016. We started to hear from groups of residents in a couple of neighborhoods where lot splits have been occurring, or had occurred, or had been proposed. And the concerns were centered upon a large lot where one single-family house existed, that it was being proposed to be divided into two. So where one house was, they were now starting to see two homes. And not only were there two homes where one house used to be, the two homes where they felt were large and out of scale and out of place in a context with the neighborhood. So that concern reached the level of the planning commission and city council's attention. And the commission may recall sometime around mid-2016, we had a study session here to talk about the regulations affecting lot splits and regulations affecting house size. We made a presentation to both the planning commission and the city council. And after we made that presentation to the city council, staff received direction that we should work with the community and address the lot size standards, and also address the house size standards, the rules that were affecting the construction of new single-family homes and home additions. So staff went to work right away. And by somewhere from the middle of 2016 to the beginning of 2017, we really focused and concentrated our efforts on the subdivision regulations. I know we received some comments from the community about what we're doing about that. But the good news is that that has already been completed. And in the early part of last year, 2017, the council adopted regulations that now require the minimum size lot to be 10,000 square feet. So that's the minimum size for subdividing a single-family lot, whereas it used to be 5,000 square feet. So we've completed that effort. And so once we completed that effort, we turned our direction to the development standards affecting single-family house size.
I just interrupt you for a second, just for the, for the folks who didn't follow that. And that was put very well and very simply, but even removing all planning speak, you know, before, folks were dividing basically 10,000, 11,000 square-foot lots into two 5,000 square-foot lots, and then putting 3,000 square-foot homes on them. So what we did and what the city did was it made it so that no lot could be divided unless it was at least 20,000 square feet. And that limited, there are very, very, I can't remember exactly, but it's like a small couple handful of lots in the entire city that can still be divided down from, I think, a couple hundred. So it basically made it so that there won't be any more, any subdivisions of significance unless they're large properties. So please.
Thank you. Sure. Thanks for that clarification. And I hope I'm not speaking too fast. I know everyone wants to hear the proposed recommendations, but I think it's important to sort of understand how this came about. So we went to work and focused our attention on the development standards for single-family homes first by deciding that it would be really important for the process to develop a citizens advisory committee. And so we worked with the city council, and it was approved by the city council to formulate a seven-member advisory committee. And the advisory committee was carefully structured. We wanted to make sure that a majority of the members were homeowners in the city. But we also knew the value and importance of adding professionals that are involved in the development and creation, and the building, and the selling of single-family homes. So we had an architect sit on this committee. We had a builder sit on the committee. And we also had a residential realtor sit on the committee. So there were three professionals and then four homeowners. And all of this is covered in the staff report, and there are extra copies in the back room over there. So when this committee was finally formulated, we received applications, and the members were reviewed and interviewed and selected by the city council. We went straight to work with them. We had our first meeting in May of 2017. We met with the committee a total of six times, each time for at least two hours. And there were, like Al mentioned, a lot of these ideas and concepts and figuring out, you know, what people liked about the homes in San Carlos and what wasn't working. All of this was discussed at length. And once the committee finally went through all of the develop, all of the proposed concepts and ideas and made its recommendations, their, the Shack's recommendations, the committee is called the Single Family House Advisory Committee. So if you hear the term Shack, it refers to that committee. It's just a creative acronym that we, that we came up with to refer to the committee. Once they made their final recommendations, we took their recommendations forward to some local architects. We felt it was really important to present these to architects that regularly work in our community, that regularly propose and, propose and work on new single-family homes and home additions. And I believe there is a letter, there is a letter from these architects. Not all of them. I think there is a letter from the architects with five signatures of those in attendance. One architect, his signature is not on the letter, but there is a comment and response letter from the architects in the packet. Following the meeting with the architects, we took forward the Shack's recommendations to a wider audience and had a community workshop in May. So that's looking at the top row in the middle, excuse me, to the far right. You can see a reference to the community workshop on May 2. For those, some of you in the room that did attend that meeting, you know that was a well-attended meeting. Approximately 150 members were in attendance, and staff collected approximately 30 comment cards from those that were in attendance, and those have been typed up and are also included in the staff report packet. So that brings us to where we're at today, which Al had mentioned previously. This is a study session. We recognize that this is an iterative process. And depending upon the direction that we get from the planning commission at the conclusion of this meeting, we are prepared to address any direction we receive, including whether or not we will be returning and reconvening in the context of a formal public hearing. We also want to reconvene with the local architects. We have looked at their letter and their comments, and we think it's important to circle back with them and continue that dialogue. So we also plan to reach out to that group again, so we continue, so we can continue that discussion. And I just wanted to clarify for the public in terms of how this process works. Is that anytime you're changing the municipal code, the zoning ordinance, these are legal rules. These are local law. And any changes to that, the final decision-making body is city council. So how this will work is that once the planning commission is ready to do so, the planning commission will make a formal recommendation that will be forwarded to the city council for the city council's consideration. So while we'll have a lot of discussion and public input at this particular venue, we will be taking ultimately whatever the planning commission's formal recommendation turns out to be and presenting that to the city council, where the council will make its final determination on the recommended changes. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Stefan Pellegrini and invite everyone to turn your attention and focus towards his part of the presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Chair Silberman, Vice Chair Bradley, members of the planning commission, and members of the San Carlos community. My name is Stefan Pellegrini. I'm an architect and planner with Opticos Design. We're located in Berkeley, California. And we've been working with staff since this project's inception. So I'm going to go through the summary of our analysis tonight and go over seven key findings that I'd like to review with you. And Chair Silberman, I do appreciate your comments, and I appreciate all of your questions tonight, because we do agree that this is sort of a complex matter. We started the process in working with the Shack to do an analysis of the existing RS6 standards, as Al mentioned, to sort of get down to the bottom of what may have been contributing to this issue of house size in San Carlos. And we tried to summarize this on one slide, and I think these three points came to mind for us. One is that the existing zoning envelope in the RS6 zone is actually quite large. And so it can result in houses that look and feel large. And the, generally, the deciding factor that's determining how big houses can be today is the lot coverage standard of 50%. And what I mean by that is that that's usually the standard that you run up against before you run up against other standards, such as setbacks that are controlling building size. It's really the lot coverage, and that really comes down to how big your house is on the ground floor and your ability to go upstairs from that within the zoning envelope. And I think what we also noticed is that recent construction had increasingly started to be built more closely to the existing zoning envelope. And you can see on this slide, there's sort of a diagram that tries to sort of outline the zoning envelope and the house that would generally sort of result from that. What we also found when looking at this and speaking to the Shack about what they thought from a design standpoint might be appealing in single-family house neighborhoods of similar size and scale is that the existing standards didn't really provide a lot of ability to manage size and bulk, and that we knew that there were sort of some best practices that we could introduce into San Carlos that might help to start to do that. And the Shack as a group was largely also interested in not necessarily just using prescriptive tools to limit house size and mass, but also thinking about ways to sort of incentivize better design, thinking about sort of a carrot-and-stick strategy. But this issue of the zoning envelope starts to come out. We did these diagrams. We took the zoning envelope model and inserted it into a San Carlos streetscape at scale. And what we've realized, again, as I mentioned, is that new houses have increasingly been proposed to the shape and mass of the zoning envelope. And so this isn't too far off from some of the design proposals that we've been seeing. And I'll get into the details of some of the things we thought were making, creating sort of issues. So that previous one was on a 50-foot lot. You can see here's the model on a 60-foot lot. And this is a recent house that's been built. And I don't want to bash this design, because this actually is a nice house. But what I wanted to use this for was to show how close it is, again, to that idea of the zoning envelope. Houses are being built to the sort of maximum size that can be allowed, and that is resulting in large houses. And I'll come back to that house at the end of the presentation. So here are the seven issues that I'll go over this evening. And I'll start with building size and massing. We'll spend some time talking specifically about garage placement and how to park on parcels, building setbacks, building form and lot coverage, building height, and then we'll conclude with the discussion of the resulting building area and some of the things that we've been considering that are actually more tied to how houses are reviewed and processed as opposed to their development standards. So the first issue has to do with building size and massing. And as I mentioned, the 50% lot coverage is generally today the determining factor in determining how big houses can be. But there also are stepped building setbacks at the front and sides, which when houses are built to the full zoning envelope, tend to sort of create a wedding cake form. And I think these, the Shack sort of felt that this was one contributor to this issue of house size. So some of the things that we're sort of thinking about to sort of try to mitigate these issues of building size and massing are listed here. The first one is to think about where we can increase setbacks and clarify the height regulations in order to reduce the maximum zoning envelope. And I'll talk a little bit about more of that, more about that in our presentation tonight. The second one is that we are considering the introduction of an additional layer of standards, which we're referring to as regulations for the main body of the house. And this is a layer of regulations that would be geared to limit the building footprint and promote a compact house form on the lot. You could be, you think about it as a way to try to sort of minimize the way that a floor plan can sprawl across the larger portion of the lot, to deliver sort of comparable square footages, but on a more compact footprint. And we also want to think about how we can introduce wing regulations, how you could add on to this main body form in smaller elements that can extend into side and rear yards, but which much, with much less pressure or impact to what we see to, that additions and house forms are doing today. And what we want to sort of think about here is the impacts that really sort of are introduced on neighboring properties in certain areas of impact. So this diagram returns to the one I showed you previously. The top one shows, again, the existing envelope. On the left, you can see the 3D mass and two views of sort of how that actually generally is built out. And below, you can see that we're introducing this new idea of a more compact main body form, which would sit inside the zoning envelope and actually sort of limit the mass and bulk of the house. So you can start to see just generally by looking at this diagram that we are trending toward a reduction in house size. And I will break this down a little bit further during the presentation. So a little bit more on this idea of main body. We've provided this definition that the main body is a principal one- or two-story mass of a house that includes the primary entrance and would include the primary program of the house. And so you can see, let's see if this works. It doesn't really show up on the screen. I can just wave my arms, too. So you can see the box outlined in red is representative of the main body. And we are proposing that extensions from this main body could be created that are actually outlined in the darker blue color. Oh, thank you so much. And that these, those would be, oh, that's great. So these could actually provide extensions from the main body within the guise of the zoning envelope. And so, and I can sort of break that down a little bit more. And we actually have some three-dimensional scaled models to start to communicate this idea in a little bit more detail. So the second issue is around garage placement and parking. So the second issue is around garage placement and parking. And the issue that we discussed with the Shack is that today, 65% of the front facade is actually allowed to be garage under current standards. So you can break that down on a 50-foot lot with five-foot setbacks. That means a Biffa building is 40 feet wide. About 26 feet of that can be a garage. And what we realized is that that was creating facades that were overly dominated by garage doors. And the leftover space in that equation is typically not large enough to include an actual room facing the street. So we were seeing new houses that were essentially two-car garage with an entrance and some sort of porch form around that entrance, which had a significant difference between the way these houses appeared to the street and what the neighboring older houses were doing. What's contributing to this, we feel, is not only the 65% requirement, but that there is a requirement that the two required spaces, two required off-street spaces are required to be inside a garage. And so it's difficult to provide some flexibility on smaller lots if you wanted to provide a smaller garage, particularly if your lot is not big enough to put the garage elsewhere on the property. And it seemed that there was an opportunity there to sort of think about some additional flexibility. So what we discussed with the Shack is that particularly on narrower lots, and in this case, I would mean narrower by lots that are less than 60 feet wide, we would maintain the two-car off-street requirement, but actually reduce the coverage requirement to one so that only one space would be required to be in a garage, and the other space could be in a driveway or under a carport. And in tandem with that, we would consider a standard that said that we would allow only one-car garages at the front facade so that buildings facing the street could predominantly be articulated with architecture and rooms and porches. And that two- or three-car garages would be possible only at the mid or rear lot locations of the parcel.
May I interrupt for a second and ask a question? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Does this allowing for the one-car garage at the front facade suggestion only apply to lots that are less than 60 feet wide, or would that apply universally?
Right now, and thank you for the question, right now, we are considering it only on narrower lots because as lots get wider, there appear to be a broader set of configurations where you could place a garage and not have the facade overwhelmingly be defined by the garage. So our discussion with the Shack to date has been to limit this only to lots less than 60 feet wide.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So again, this diagram starts to show the impact of the zoning envelope and that two-thirds maximum requirement. And the result is often houses that are dominated by garages at the front facade. And what we actually are trying to get toward is a standard that actually would promote a broader flexibility in terms of configurations. And so this diagram is one that we use with the Shack, but these are four different kinds of sort of house forms and how garages could be placed either at front, mid, or rear lot conditions to actually accommodate these forms. Garages today actually are allowed to be placed at the rear back, the rear side of the lot under existing standards, and we would consider that to actually continue. But we also think that actually makes sense to sort of try to incentivize, again, where those two-car garages would be present, to actually push them back in the lot and actually allow more of the house at the front street to be articulated by actual building form.
So you're doing fine. Just to give everyone an idea of how long your presentation is about, how far into your presentation are you?
So we're about a third of the way through.
Okay. And are you going to go back to one through seven at the end, or?
No, I wasn't planning on it, but I can.
No, no, no. It just, I mean, to me, I try and, I'm not a planner, and so I try and draw significance to what you're saying in ways that I can understand it. So item one, basically, we're allowing folks to build on a little bit less of the lot. And we're basically, through the standards, encouraging them to put a smaller main body on the lot. And if they want more square footage, like, you know, wings, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're gonna, the houses are gonna feel less massive because they're gonna be on a smaller portion of the lot.
That's the intent.
But they're also probably going to be more likely to be two-story than one-story because the, by reducing the size of the main body, in order to get square footage, people are gonna have to build up, right? In general?
That is potentially an impact. I will say that we have thought about the size of the main body as just a smaller version of a zoning envelope. And the Shack was very interested in that we identified dimensions that were generous enough to accommodate certain kinds of floor plans. So we do think that when lots get really tiny, particularly below 49 feet, that it, where it is very difficult to actually get a reasonably sized house on one floor that we would see two stories go up, particularly when we see lots that are probably 70 feet or wider, I think the need to, I personally think the need to go up to two stories starts to decrease.
Well, then let me ask Steph. I mean, when we think of our lots, what percentage of them are 60 feet in width? And just ballpark, and I won't hold you to it, but are a vast majority over less than 60 feet in width?
We, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we do have those numbers. We looked at that, and although I can't ballpark it right off the top of my head, however, I can tell you that in some neighborhoods in the flat areas of San Carlos, the White Oaks neighborhood, areas around downtown and north of San Carlos Avenue on the flats tend to have smaller lots. So you're looking at 40 and 50 feet and some 60-foot wide, but more of the smaller lots are on the flat areas of our city. As you go up in elevation, the lots tend to get wider. So, but numbers-wise, we could deliver that to you at your next meeting.
That's, I mean, I think that's good. But in general, and again, we're just talking about frankly, in new homes, because, you know, these standards are going to be applying to new homes that are built. We're probably gonna continue to see, which we see already, mostly people building two-story homes.
I think that's correct. Yeah. And the only way I would clarify that is that the Shack did mention that there is a sort of breed of homes in San Carlos that are subject to home additions. And that those houses actually structurally are very difficult to add a second story. And so they wanted to make sure that these standards were going to accommodate one-story additions to those houses where they felt it was unlikely in the short and near term or unfeasible to actually build two-story houses in those locations.
And, Mr. Chairman, just a quick addition to that, and I think that Stefan might be talking about this, but the Shack was also interested in incentivizing single-story houses and allowing for greater flexibility in some areas of the envelope and the process to, again, incentivize somebody to stay at one story. And so I think Stefan will touch on those.
Yeah.
And then as far as the garages, I mean, it seems like what these standards are going to do is, especially on the smaller lots, they're only going to be able to build a one-car garage, which you would also think would have at least the potential to have, to create a smaller house because rather than dedicating 450 square feet to a garage, you're only going to be dedicating about 250 square feet to a garage, which is going to allow more room on the property for house. Is that kind of what we would be expecting as far as?
Generally, yes. I would say that typically the threshold for making a garage at the rear feasible is about 50 feet in width, and below 50 feet, it really is impossible to do. Above 50, it becomes much easier. What happens today is that a two-car garage, when it's attached to the house, is actually taking up a significant portion of the zoning envelope at the ground floor. So what we are considering is that if that was lowered to actually only one, that actually allows people to gain more of a smaller zoning envelope for house than otherwise would be available. So we're shrinking the zoning envelope on one side, but saying you don't actually have to actually take 400-plus square feet of that and devote it to garage, if that makes sense.
Couldn't that be abused, though? I could see someone having a one-car garage, not wanting to park their second car in front of their car in the garage and then parking on the road. I mean, it's possible, right?
Yeah, that's come up a lot. I think, you know, it was important for us to consider that we would not reduce the off-street parking requirement. So there would still need to be a requirement to actually have two parking spaces off-street. Only one would actually have to be in a garage. We also recognize that even a two-car garage, as many of us use our garages for other things, is not forcing both cars to be parked off-street. So we felt comfortable, and it was in line with the standards that we see in many other peninsula cities that actually require two cars on the parcel, but only one that needs to be in a garage.
All right. If you could continue.
I can, yes, thank you. So I'm going to move on. I think hopefully through the Q and A, we sort of were able to sort of address some of these garage placement and parking issues. We did this diagram to sort of show the range of possibilities for where garages can go under these existing standards. And this diagram starts to actually sort of communicate that and plan. The yellow shows on a standard 50-foot parcel that sort of main body dimension. And you can see that sometimes the house is built out to that main body dimension. Sometimes it doesn't use the whole thing. And where garages actually might go in relationship to that main body. The 50-by-100 lot, I think, just to sort of fall back on what Al was mentioning, we believe that it actually is the most common dimension in San Carlos. It was important for us to actually make sure that the standards would actually work for that dimension. So the third issue is regards to building setbacks. And I mentioned the wedding cake issues before with the stepped planes at the front and side setbacks. But we also felt that there is an issue in that the rear setbacks were not adequately protecting existing rear yards. We believe that one of the primary points for conflict is that the existing backyards in many San Carlos homes are actually much larger than the allowed zoning envelope today, which means that you may have a backyard that you think is actually defensible against encroachment by your neighbors, but your neighbors actually have the right to actually build into your rear yard space. So we think it's actually important to consider increasing the rear setbacks to actually limit that point of potential conflict. And we also would like to reconsider some of the front and side setbacks where they are appropriate. So here's sort of a list of sort of generally what we're proposing to recommend. Today, at the front, the first floor setback is 15, and the second floor is 19. The rear is actually 15 at both the first and second floor. And the side setbacks actually are five at the first floor and nine at the second floor. But there is a caveat that 30% of the second floor can actually encroach to the five-foot setback. And we thought this was a little bit problematic because our understanding in discussing with staff is that it was a very difficult standard to interpret, and it meant that you could really position a two-story portion of your house anywhere along that side lot line, regardless of what sort of conflict it may have with the neighbor. And we knew that this sort of idea of second-story additions sort of looming over adjacent rear yards and one-story houses was an issue, and we wanted to see if we could sort of address that. So at the front setback, we're considering 15 and 20, but we also want to allow wings to extend in the second floor across that 20-foot setback, and I'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. We're proposing to increase the rear setbacks by five at the first floor and 10 at the second floor. And we're proposing to limit the five-foot setback at the main body, but to actually consider the main body width to provide greater flexibility in terms of how the house can be configured on a lot. And I have some additional diagrams that will start to explain that. This starts to show the proposed building setbacks that we're talking about. The red outline, it would be again the main body of the house. The purple zones are places where wings could be extended, and those could slide back and forth and up and down across those planes to sort of get the resulting building masses that you see here. And when we put all this together, and this is sort of seen at sort of relative scale, you can start to see the impact in the zoning envelope. So this is an existing 50-by-100 foot lot, and this actually shows the allowed zoning envelope. The diagram on your left is a scene from front to rear going left to right. And then the two following that are, you see the lots vertically, front to rear and rear to front. So you can see, these again are the existing allowable building envelope that's allowed under the standards today. And what we're proposing is this, which is, as I'll get through the numbers, it calculates out to be about a 20% reduction in what's allowed. And then I want to sort of touch on this a little bit. There's been a lot of discussion about daylight plane. And when we look at other peninsula cities, we did an analysis of 17 cities on the peninsula. It's a whole range of places from very urban to not urban at all. There are about six cities that actually are using a daylight plane. And generally, what they are controlling, and it's not an apples-to-apples condition, but generally what they're controlling is a daylight plane that can extend either from the side setback line or the side property line up to a center point of the lot at a 45-degree angle sometime.
You're gonna have to take that out of planning speak.
Yeah, I'm gonna show you on this diagram right up here. So if I can use the arrow. If I can get this to work. All right, I'll just wave my arms. So if you look at the top diagram that says neighborhood setback, and the central house actually is sitting under a gray triangle, and that triangle is actually the diagram of the daylight plane. And so what that triangle says is, in this case, we used an average of what we see in other peninsula cities, which is that you draw a line.
Sorry, but I'm having a hard time hearing you.
All right. I'll start to speak more closer to the mic.
Thank you.
If you go to the setback line and you, at the side setback, and you go 16 feet up in the air, then that is actually the bottom point of that triangle. And then if you take a line 45 degrees up to the center of that parcel toward the peak of that pyramid, that actually is, that area needs to be free from building in cities that actually are imposing a daylight plane standard. So what this means is that if you, in this situation, if you want to put buildings that are closer to the setback line underneath that pyramid, is that they have to be shorter, right? So you can have to step the building up into the pyramid. So for the most part, what daylight plane is generally controlling when it's set between 16 and 22 feet, which is generally where we see it, is it's controlling the form of the roof of the building. It's making sure that the building doesn't have too steep of roofs. It's making sure that there's not a lot of dormers or other things up at the roof that actually are breaking that plane. What we wanted to actually demonstrate here is that, looking at this main body dimension that we are proposing.
Can I stop you for one second? I'm just gonna really be, really, could you please define daylight plane in like regular English?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Can you please give me a really basic definition of daylight plane?
Sure. A daylight plane is a zoning tool that's used to preserve a light plane that could extend from the sky down to a side yard setback.
So affecting shade and light, is the goal?
Yes, generally, yes.
Just making sure. I'm sorry, I just.
No, no, it's okay.
If I have questions, I'm probably not the only one in this.
We wanted to bring it up because it's been brought up a lot in public comment. And I will say, it is a blunt tool because it is imposed regardless of which way the building is actually oriented. And we know that the sun is not generally always in the same place, so.
But it also seems like what you're trying to say is that the standard, these standard daylight plane limitations don't end up actually limiting the height of the house significantly. They just end up, you know, making people not be able to put certain design features on the house.
That's correct. I think to be scientific. I think to be scientific, we have two examples on the peninsula in that where it may be imposing further restrictions, but those are both situations where the minimum lot size is much larger than what we have here in San Carlos. So we want to be mindful of making an apples-to-apples comparison to that. So getting back to this diagram, what we wanted to show is that the main body width, which now is, what we're proposing is smaller than the zoning envelope, is intended to create some flexibility in how you set or place the main body of the house to respond or minimize conflicts with where your neighbors might be. So if you had two neighbors that were actually at the minimum setback, you could place the main body of the house in the middle of the parcel, and that would preserve a setback condition that would generally be similar to what we see in other peninsula cities that are imposing this additional daylight plane standard. But we also would give some flexibility to slide that main body around if there are opportunities for privacy or a better relationship with the neighbor that actually can be offered. And so the second one actually shows if you have a situation where your neighbor has public rooms that are actually facing the side yard, bedrooms and living rooms, you actually could shift the house away from that configuration, the main body of the house. If you have a neighbor that actually has private rooms, things like kitchens and bathrooms facing your side yard, you would also have the ability to react and shift away from that. So this is, this is, the standard is thought about to sort of provide an additional layer of flexibility and not just have the end game be, let's just put the building up to the maximum setbacks and then see if our neighbor likes that or not.
They don't.
Yeah. So the fourth issue is on building form and lot coverage. I won't get into this sort of in as much greatest detail, but as I mentioned, the 50% standard was really what the controlling factor was. But that seemed to be resulting in houses that actually were very large and very long because you could reach 50% lot coverage and actually do a house that was 65, 70, 75 feet in length. And we realized that actually was also creating some issues around conflict with neighbors. So our approach is to not only regulate main body width, but also the length. And when we introduce wings that extend from the main body, actually have those be smaller in scale and to regulate those to sort of have reduced the scale as we get out to sort of the periphery of the zoning envelope. But at the same time, we didn't want to make things overly restrictive for one-story houses, particularly on small lots. So we've considered some caveats and some sort of asterisks to the standard for small parcels. So these are the proposed main body widths and depths. This 45-foot depth, again, is the idea is to actually concentrate most of the mass of the house in that front 45 feet. You can think about that if you have a 15-foot setback, that's actually sort of limiting the maximum house depth to about 60. And we think that's actually reducing greatly by what we've seen in some of the house proposals where it was sort of 70 or 75 feet back. Right now, we're considering that wings could be up to 18 feet max, and those could actually extend up to the limitations of the setbacks. And these diagrams sort of show how those pieces actually could go together.
So just so I'm, we're changing the lot area, right? That's what you're talking about here? Is it changing the actual, oh, you're changing the house size, right? So if you make the house size, I mean, you're making, I'm trying to formulate what I'm trying to say here. If you're going from something that doesn't have, has no maximum body size to a minimum, to a proposed body sizes on the floor plan, don't you build up? Are people going to build up?
Yeah, I think, yes.
That's the trade-off, right? I mean, we're saying, we're saying we're going to make, you only have this much of a, you know, main four plan, but I mean, that doesn't get rid of the other, you know, squeeze one side of the balloon, and you get, it goes to the other side of the balloon, and then people will build up, right? I mean, potentially, but probably.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, and we can get into this a little bit with the numbers, but generally, what we're seeing is about a 20% reduction in lot coverage, and that's resulting in about a 20% reduction in potential house size.
Okay.
But yeah, there still would be a desire probably to, in many of these parcels, to go up to a second floor to obtain that.
Okay, nice, thank you.
And I mentioned that sort of on the smallest of lots, we wanted to think about a caveat to this. It was very important from the Shack's position to continue to not restrict rear yard additions to one-story houses, particularly in situations where there were structural or other feasibility issues around making that a two-story house. So what we're considering on lots that are 49 feet or narrower is that you would be allowed to build out the back the full dimension of the allowable zoning envelope as opposed to sort of using the rear wing technique.
With specific setbacks, because then the way you're looking at your neighbors cross away, right?
That's correct.
I mean, you just created, okay, it's all about balance, right? Because once we change one thing, we're affecting another.
That's what we're looking for. So, okay, so we've got just a couple more issues. The fifth one is building height. The big issues that I think we sort of wanted to underline is that there's a 28-foot maximum height here, and there actually is a 25-foot maximum height for one-story buildings. And that does result in buildings that are tall and taller than what's going on next door. Although the 28-foot maximum height is pretty typical for two-story limitations that we see on the peninsula. So what we're proposing is actually introduce an additional height to the highest eve to actually sort of limit and sort of pull down how the house looks at the envelope, but still allow the peaks of roofs to go up to 28. We also are proposing to reduce the height of one-story buildings from 25 down to 20 to reduce how much those might impose on neighboring buildings. This is sort of a diagram that shows what the standards are today and what we are proposing on two-story and one-story houses. And then this also deals with how we are measuring height on slow plots because I think there was some concern from the Shack and from staff about walkout basements and two-story houses sort of turning into three-story houses as they're seen from the street. So we're proposing to actually limit the amount of basement that can actually be exposed on the street side before it's considered a full story.
What was the rationale behind decreasing the maximum height of a one-story?
The Shack felt that one-story houses that actually could reach 25 feet were still creating a conflict issue with neighboring houses that actually had eve heights that were much lower. There's many one-story houses that have an eve height of 12 or 14. And so we thought it was actually worthwhile to consider dropping it from 25 to 20 and limiting the eve height actually to 16.
So as a house that has dormers, basically, you're not actually putting on a full second story, but you're adding dormers in the attic, is that considered a, is that considered a one-story or a two-story?
My understanding, and Lisa, you can help me out on this, is that that would be considered a two-story house if there actually is space under an attic. This one-story limitation would be strictly to houses that have no second-story program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we talked about this. And then the last one is sort of what happens when we start to put this together and we start to look at this numerically. We mentioned that today that the lot coverage is what's sort of generating or sort of setting a limit on house size. When we put all this together, we start to see some reductions in building envelope. And when this translates to numbers, we put together some analysis that looked at existing zoning envelope versus proposed, and we ran this on sort of a range of lot sizes, and we ran it against different lot configurations in terms of where you actually might place the garage. The important thing to remember is that if you put the garage in the rear yard either today or after these standards are changed, you get extra square footage on your parcel because you are ostensibly placing that outside the zoning envelope. So we see the lot coverage and a resultant FAR increase a little bit when we push the garage outside the building zoning envelope, if that makes sense. And that's the way that things are today, and we would propose that actually they could continue that way. But under the existing standards, we generally see a lot coverage maxing out at 50%, and we see a resultant FAR floor area ratio. I can provide a definition. Okay, floor area ratio is the ratio of the total floor area of the house to the area of the lot. And so if you have a floor area ratio of one, it means that you would have a one-story building that fits on 100% of the lot. And you can see that under the existing zoning standards, the zoning envelope is pushing an FAR of close to one. What we're proposing is resulting in a decrease in the lot coverage by about 20%, generally to around 40%. And we feel like that is pretty comparable with what we see in other peninsula cities, that sort of 40% to 45% lot coverage. And we're seeing an FAR drop to actually about 0.7. And I can talk more about that if needed. These are some diagrams to sort of try to sort of illustrate this impact. The red line in these diagrams is the outline of a house that has been proposed in San Carlos on this particular parcel. So this is generally a 50-by-110 lot. The red line shows the proposed house. On the left-hand side, in the gray-green, you see how that compares to the existing zoning envelope. And on the right side, in the blue, you see how that would compare to the proposed zoning envelope. So you can see that the dark blue, which is sort of, or the dark purple, which actually is outlining the main body and wings of the house, is generally much smaller than the footprint of that building that actually is proposed. So that's where you see that 20% reduction in lot coverage and general sort of house size that would be attributed to these changes in the standards.
Can you back up a minute?
Absolutely.
Okay, I want to be real clear. All right, so on the left-hand side, this is the existing zoning, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and so the width, it says 47.8, so that's the hash line, right? So that's, it's a 47-foot, eight-inch, I mean, 47-feet, eight-inch lot?
Wide parcel, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And it is a 50% FAR, or what is it?
I don't know the FAR on this one, yeah, because, yeah.
It's the maximum that we would allow right now.
Yes, this house was pushing the 50% lot coverage requirement. It was under it.
50% lot coverage.
Yeah, but it was pushing it, yeah.
And so on the proposed, we have 50, we have basically a two-foot, a lot that's two-foot wider, two feet wider.
No, I'm sorry, it's the same lot.
It's existing lot.
Yeah, it's the same lot. We're showing the same lot, the same footprint on both lots, but with a different zoning envelope.
So the red line is what the house footprint would be under the existing and the proposed, and then the gray and the green are what?
The red line is the outline of a house that has actually been proposed on this parcel. That is the outline of the house that has been proposed on this parcel. On the left-hand side, we see that compared to the existing zoning envelope. That essentially is the area on the lot where you can build. And on the right-hand side, we see that same outline of the house compared to the proposed zoning envelope.
All right, so the left is where right now we can go, where he could have gone or she could have gone if they'd wanted to. And on the right is the limitations that would be in place and the proposed changes.
Yeah.
How it would, I mean, the working area.
Right, so you can't build that house.
That's correct. You would have to redesign that house in order for.
The house doesn't fit on the, in the building envelope anymore.
To be compliant with these proposed standards, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so this example on a wide lot, this is an 80-by-120 lot. It actually measures out to just under 79 at the front property line, about 118 wide. And again, you can see the same thing. The red is the outline of the proposed house. The gray-green is showing the existing zoning envelope on the left, and the two shades of purple are showing the proposed zoning envelope on the right. One thing I'd sort of do want to point out, there's that main body box that you see on the right, we've put it in the lower left-hand corner, but it can really be allowed to slide anywhere in that, in that mass. So you could probably get a house that is, has a generally similar footprint, but it's going to be a little bit smaller than what's been proposed. Okay, so this is the last point, and this is really about processing and review. And we discussed this a lot with the Shack and with staff, that there was a need to sort of strengthen the information that's in the zoning ordinance. A good example right now is that the RDRC makes decisions regarding compatibility with the existing neighborhood, but it actually, the zoning ordinance actually doesn't articulate what that means. And so there's an opportunity to add some criteria, what we mean by compatibility.
Quite familiar with that one, yeah.
So we want to think about sort of.
Got a lot of discussions on that.
How we can sort of define that a little bit more carefully. And I think we also would want to consider ways that that can be used to sort of make better design decisions. Some of the other things that have been discussed are to relax processing requirements for basements so that if people actually do want to do additional square footage, they are not necessarily penalized or have to go through an additional process to actually go underground. This is something that we're seeing in other cities that are experiencing similar development pressure. They actually are seeing an increase in basement construction to actually add rec rooms and other things to house program. The Shack did discuss the need to actually allow some modulations from setback standards, particularly if large trees could be preserved. We talked about review criteria, the need to include additional definitions for some of these new components I'm talking about. And as Al mentioned earlier, to consider streamlined processes for houses that actually would be single-story only and compliant with the standards to sort of incentivize folks to actually stay under two stories. So circling back to that initial example, we started to look at the impact of the zoning standards on an existing house. This is still a little bit of a scientific process, so, you know, we can sort of take this with some caveats. But the existing house, it'll just take a sec to move forward. There we go. The existing house actually is about 50 feet wide and sitting on a 60-foot lot. You can see the two-car garage and the minimal setbacks. You can see that the step in at the upper story to the nine feet is again mimicking the zoning envelope. So if we were to impose these standards away from design, we actually would end up restricting the main body down to 36 feet on this lot. So we would, this would propose that as the house is seen at the front setback line, it actually would have to be 14-foot narrower. We looked at this plan, and we thought, it looks like we actually can accommodate most of the program in this reconfigured house, but it generates sort of less of an impact at the street. And we also have kept that garage at the street, but following the new standards, there's only a one-car garage and an adjacent carport. So what that does when we sort of put this on the lot is it starts to limit the horizontal impact of the house, the two-story portion of the house, as it says, appears on the parcel. So we're hoping that some of these things actually sort of start to deal with some of these compatibility issues. And as I mentioned, this probably would result in about a 20% reduction in the amount of house in these two stories that actually could be placed on the parcel. And that concludes my presentation. I didn't get into the models, but I'd be happy to do that. It's actually very useful to sort of visualize the impacts of the changes.
So you're sticking around?
I'm not going anywhere.
All right. I do want to make sure that the public has, I want to see the models too, and I encourage everyone who can stay to stay to see the models, but I also want to make sure that we, unless you want to give like, if you have like one or two examples with the models that you want to show now, maybe we'll do that, you know.
Yeah, why don't we just do that really quickly?
Five minutes. And then we can do more at the end after the public has had an opportunity to speak.
Can you turn it off? Where's the?
So is there monkeying with technology? So folks know I've got 12 speaker slips plus a 13th, which is Christian and Brent. And I'm assuming you would like closer to 10 minutes, right? Yeah. So normally, other speakers, we give two minutes to. That would be 24 minutes for the speaker slips I have. I suspect there are people who want to speak who don't, who haven't filled out speaker slips. You know, if you need a little bit more time, I'm absolutely going to give it to you. Just ask me. ask me. But if you can try and keep it to as close to two minutes as you can. We read all of the emails that you send, you know, there'll be another opportunity, it's so funny, it looks like they're playing, anyway. Sorry, I'm easily distractible. You know, there will be other times to speak as well. And again, I say that not trying to discourage anybody from speaking, we absolutely want to hear from you. How's it going over there? Is there, do you have a train or no?
I can also hold these up for all of you.
I mean, I'm getting a little dizzy, but otherwise I'm excited.
Why don't I do it this way?
Look at that! I like it.
There we go. So, okay.
It's good.
So these parcels in front of me actually are a standard 50-by-100 foot lot. And this diagram here, if I can slide this over.
Perfect.
There we go. So this represents the existing zoning envelope. So you can see the stepped profile at the sides and at the front. And if I turn this, you can see sort of the general depth of the building that's actually then generated by the lot, again, that 50% lot coverage. And then this gable at the back is actually showing that portion of the second floor that can extend onto the side yard setback at the ground floor. And we basically drew the worst-case scenario, was that that shifted all the way back to the lot, looking into somebody's rear yard. And then, under the existing zoning envelope, on a 50-foot lot, the main body is limited to 32 by 45. And this is actually, starts showing a 32-foot dimension. So if this one is actually 40, this actually is limited to 32. So I can place that anywhere within that lot, but I'm actually going to place it in the middle.
This is under the proposed standards?
Yeah, these are the proposed standards.
It's for the main body?
Just for the main body.
Yeah.
And if I put it in the middle, I likely would have a garage off the front of the house. So you might have a porch that is actually allowed to encroach. And you may also have a two-story wing that actually could come up to that 15-foot setback. So you might have something like that at the front facade. If you, and then you also would be allowed to build a rear wing to the rear setback, which in this case would sit in back, and I can turn this and sort of show you. And then you would be allowed to do side wings up to the limit of the side yard setback, and build this out off to the side. So this is sort of generally sort of the smaller mass. And then if you wanted to actually put the garage in the rear, in this situation, you actually could shift the house over and put the garage in the back. And that would actually allow you to do, you know, generally a full facade with the porch here, and then build a wing to the rear setback, and you might have space to do a wing on the side, so. But generally, we were sort of trending towards this idea of reducing the mass of the houses.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to begin calling folks up, and I'm going to begin with Christian and Brent.
Okay, thank you, David. We have a few slides that we wanted to use to support our comments tonight. Brent and I are co-presenting here as co-founders of Good Growth San Carlos. So, oh, you need the mouse?
Yes. If I can pull up your presentation.
While that's coming up, I would also mention that I, for the past 12 months, have served on the Single Family Home Advisory Committee, which is the seven residents convene to provide the city with input on the process. I think it's worth mentioning in this forum that we are an advisory committee, and that the recommendations did not necessarily come from the Shack. They were produced by the city in consultation with the consultant, and we provided comments on it, responses to it, but the intent was for a minority of the people to be part of that body, to be not involved in any way with real estate as an industry. And then, so a minority would have expertise that they could share. The majority was intended to be people with just garden variety homeowners in San Carlos. So I would say that, to say this, if you're going to continue to say the Shack recommended this or that, I would point out that the recommendations were not unanimous. I thought there were a lot of good ideas that came out of the process, I was encouraged by it. But the end of the day, you need to add those up to say, what do the standards, proposed standards allow? And so I was a dissenting boast on the package. I think we'll be making the case now that although there are good ideas and good work has been done, we're not convinced that these solve the problem in a meaningful way that we need to get to. We're hopeful that we can make some changes and potentially some additions to this that would get us there. So that's a little bit of a preamble. Pardon? Oh, is this, will this allow me to? Okay, I'm not going to spend time here. This is who we are as Good Growth San Carlos and what we're working for. If you're interested in more information from this residence-based organization, you could find it at this particular URL. To refocus everyone on really how we got here and what we, you know, why are we here? What are the problems we're trying to solve as a community here? Residents were raising issues associated with lot splits and oversized homes, primarily being the impact it had on individuals' privacy, their access to sunshine, and you hear some examples of that here today, and also just air circulation openness. And lastly, and secondly, character and coherence of the neighborhoods. And some people shorthand that and say charm, or just what the city looks like. Now, the reason we're focusing on it is not seven key issues associated with, you know, mass, size, and height. Ultimately, the reason we're here is because we're, those things are of concern because of the impact they have or don't have on individuals. And one resident, I know who'll be making a comment tonight, who has had immediate experience with that, is Bill Harkola, and I'll let him speak for himself. So...
Yeah, so in terms of the work that's been done, you know, we tried to boil it down to, you know, pretty simple questions in terms of taking a look. And on my view, and I know Christian and others' view, there has been a lot of good work that's been done over the last 12 to 18 months on this topic, and we really appreciate the city's seriousness in terms of taking a look at this. From a resident's perspective, at the end of the day, though, I think the question comes down to, are these recommendations meaningful? A meaningful improvement in that sense, right? And more so, how do we know? You know, we, some of the information that was presented tonight showed some examples. Some of these examples seem to be more hypothetical or theoretical, and rather than in terms of having been looked at against the last five years of what's been built, and would that have actually had any sort of meaningful change in terms of those structures? And then finally, of course, should the city implement these? Even if these don't go as far as perhaps some of us think that they should go, does that mean that they shouldn't necessarily be put in place? And of course, that echoes a lot of the comments that have already been made tonight as well. As it relates to what citizens want in terms of San Carlos, we go back and look at the survey that the city did two years ago now, June of 2016. I think this is the only example of sort of quantitative input that we've seen, and we realize that this was not necessarily couched as a scientific study. But I do think it is a good sort of pulse, or just litmus test to take a look at in terms of, 78% of the residents, 180 residents filled out and responded to this survey, 78% when asked about house size, and as it relates to being more restrictive or less restrictive, 78% said about the same or more restrictive in terms of San Carlos standards. So I think that's a pretty clear indicator, even with a pretty broad margin of error, that there is overwhelming support for smaller homes, or at least standards that they're in line with other nearby cities on the peninsula. And so the question then comes to, okay, well, so what does that mean? We heard some information tonight in terms of comparisons as it relates to lot area ratio, where other cities along the peninsula have about 50%. What does it mean in terms of some of the other metrics? And Christian, I know you've done more analysis on this.
Thanks. I neglected to add that I'm also highly encouraged that, you know, that we're here. Two years ago, this was a problem, and now we're having a very substantive discussion about it. So I also feel very good about the effort that's being made. I'd like to make sure that there's, the city's residents' concerns are addressed, but I think we can get to a good outcome. You know, I would also know, most of you know me by now, I've been at just about every one of these meetings for the past two years. I would also point out that I think I was one of two Shack members at the initial public hearing, and I think I'm the only one here tonight to follow up, so just an observation. Okay, so you've probably all seen one version or another of this graph in the past two years. We've updated it. What it shows is the proposed house size and maximum house size in San Carlos as it compares to six other cities that we think are good comparables up and down the peninsula. And so the comparison we'd like to direct your attention to is comparing the San Carlos house maximum to the median of these six other cities. So on a 5,000-square-foot lot, the proposal suggests that someone could build a, essentially a 2,700-square-foot house, which is the median in other cities. San Carlos is suggesting that on a 5,000-square-foot lot, the maximum house could be in excess of 3,600 square feet. I'd point out that the red bars are where we are today, which are exceedingly out of line with other cities on the peninsula. The more salmon-colored bars are what the proposal is. So the fact that we've decreased the theoretical maximum to something less than what it was is not enough for me to feel comfortable as a resident that we've solved the problem. If we look at 6,000 square feet, the median household size in six other cities is 3,100. In San Carlos, the proposed house size is 4,500. That's about, you know, that's probably getting close to the 45% larger than our peers. And if we look at 7,000 feet, square feet, this is actually understated based on the city's data. The median in the other cities is allowing a house of 3,600 square feet, whereas in San Carlos, the proposed maximum house is 51. So these are obviously nowhere near comparable or less restricted than other communities. And so this is a real cause for concern, and leads me to wonder, when residents by a three-to-one margin are saying they'd like to see something more conservative, how we got here. So here's our position. We're going to state why we think these aren't yet a solution to the issue and not a meaningful improvement. We're going to close with some recommendations that we think the city could adopt that would help move us in that direction. So to begin with, as Brent said upfront, our conclusion is that these are not yet, unfortunately, a meaningful improvement because of maximum house size, which is 35% to 45% larger than six peer cities up and down the peninsula. The second-story setback in the recommendations has gone from nine feet down to five feet. That means that you can put a two-story wall five feet from the property line next to your neighbor, and that's a reduction. So quantitative, we look at that and say that's a concern. There are no explicit protections of light and privacy. David, I would take some, you know, I would question the notion that other cities don't do it, or at least let's put it this way. We'll see that four of the six cities to which we're comparing ourselves have implemented a daylight standard to provide people with some form of protections to light and privacy.
But does it actually do it?
I think what happens is it enforces a larger setback, and that in itself typically does improve people's access to sun and sky and to privacy. So, to wrap up, so the design review process is as important as the standards, because a lot of people feel it's a rubber stamp. And then we've got local architects who've spoken up and said that they don't believe that the proposed standards will reduce house size. So those are five reasons we feel this is not a meaningful solution to the problem. And I'll close with what we suggest. First of all, we think the city should test these standards out before they're implemented and impact the entire city. That could be done by taking six houses that in the last three to four years have generated the most complaints and concerns, actually try to apply the proposed standards on those houses and see if it would have made a difference. The theoretical, no one's getting close to the theoretical maximums in San Carlos today because they're so out of line. The second is, we've got a consultant that we've paid to assist us in this process. Mind them for additional ideas about how to address these concerns in a way that's consistent with the form-based standards they've suggested. And lastly, evaluate a broad range of complementary options, and don't preemptively rule out solutions such as a complementary far limit or a daylight plane. We're not saying throw out all the good work on form-based standards, but why couldn't we use a FAR table to do two things? One, set a limit on the size. Two, allow people to know what they can build, which is a common desire. And daylight plane is something that measures directly without posing additional restrictions, those things that are of most concern. So we hope you'll consider these recommendations as a way to move forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just to be clear, what I was saying that cities don't have are view protections and sun protections. I mean, a daylight plane to me really doesn't, I mean, in all frankness, doesn't really do anything to protect against what I'm seeing in the letters or what people are concerned about. They're like, I'm losing my view, or I don't get midday sun anymore. And I am not by any stretch of the imagination saying that those are not significant impacts on people. I'm just saying that in my review of literature, and I recommend that anyone who likes to Google California view protection, and you'll see what I'm talking about, they don't, there aren't protections like they're out there with some very small exceptions like...
This is not mostly about views. I think that by far the broader issues are privacy and access to sunlight. So I think from our perspective, even though I think, happy to discuss the view issue at another time, I think the issue is even for people on the flats, can they still get sunshine in their yard and into their dining room?
Yeah, I guess we can see, we can see the city can give us information on that, but I don't think a daylight plane is going to impact that. But you could be right, and I could be wrong.
I think it's another way of getting to setbacks, but... So any other questions for Brent and me? Thank you for your time.
Sir, you have a question for them?
Yes.
So do I have a speaker slip for you?
No. Do I need to fill one out?
You don't need to, but it's helpful, and it...
I can take it later, too.
That's fine. So if you gentlemen don't mind, I know you need to go, but if you don't mind sitting for a second, if you want to come up real quick and ask your question, you can.
So I'll just go back, I want to be on the slide, like there. The last bullet point makes an assumption that this will not reduce the house size. And you also mentioned that we are not building all the houses to the maximum size. So if we are not building a house to the maximum size, and it won't reduce the house size anyways, right? So it's kind of an odd point. It doesn't prove anything.
I think we began by saying residents' concern were with privacy, light, and air, and with the character and coherence...
I'm with you on that.
Okay, and with the character and coherence of the city. Our position is that the current standards are so out of line that even when you reduce them by 20% or 25% as done, no one was building at the theoretical limits of the standards. Most of the homes that are objectionable come in at lower, if you will, floor area ratios.
I understand, but where the data is coming from? What's the basis of that data? Is it a presumption, or is it...
So, just like you, sir, he's just a citizen, and yeah, so he's just giving his view of things.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so as I indicated, thank you, both of you, and obviously, Christian, well, both of you, I know that you've put an enormous amount of time into that, and it's worthy of acknowledgement. So thank you. So I'm going to start calling people up. Again, if you can keep it to two minutes, fantastic. If you can't, I understand, we'll do the best we can. And I'm going to start with Ms. Kinsella, if she's still here?
Yeah.
She had to leave? Okay. Well, if anyone sees her, you can tell her I called her first because of it. Lenore Matos?
Linda.
Linda? I'm so sorry. Your handwriting is great, my reading is not so.
So, good evening, council members and neighbors. I thought I'd like to point out to all of you that this discussion actually was started in March of 2015. You can access your emails, because I sent you the original letter. Unfortunately, health concerns knocked me off my feet. Thank you, Christian, for picking up the ball and making a touchdown with it. But what I'm here to point out is that, as Christian stated, this is not okay, and I believe you can... believe you can do better. We're discussing garage sizes, we're discussing aesthetics. I'm going to out myself. I own an architectural firm for 18 years, 30 years' experience, so I get all this stuff, but I work from the heart, and I think mostly what a lot of these people are addressing is the compatibility issue. We're dealing with lack of privacy, we are dealing with lack of sunshine, and we're having people build their houses up to the maximum amount they can. My neighbor is subject to this. She has a dryer vent blowing into her house from a second-story house. It doesn't need to be there. There's an air conditioning unit that's blowing into the next neighbor's house. So, the whole reason that I'm now here is because the lot next to me at 870 Sunset Drive has a proposal or hopes to put up two McMansions on the lot. This will greatly impact my sunshine, my privacy, my views. Okay, so that's not a subject of discussion, but my privacy is. I already have a house three stories up that can now look into my bedroom window. I have to keep my curtains closed all the time because I have no more privacy. It's gone. So, I sent you the original email because I wanted to point out the fact that I don't see any changes, but I do see momentum, and I'm hopeful that you can continue this momentum because privacy is a concern, compatibility is a concern, sunlight, it is a concern. I'm sorry. Some of us have our solar roofs that are now being shadowed, and they're of no use any further. So, I would like to point out again, I started this process in 2015. Check your emails. You'll see that I've had these discussions with you, and it's taken three years to get this momentum going. Please, let's continue this discussion and think about the compatibility of shoving a two-story-foot home on either side of single-story homes. This house has no privacy, this house don't have privacy. I'm three houses down. I have no privacy.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, you seem like, with your experience, again, for me, it's like, I hear people say, "I want more privacy," and I'm, I mean, it's a totally legitimate thing to say, but what we need to do is either approve or not approve actual standards--
Privacy out of the discussion.
And you seem like someone who-- No, no, I'm saying it would be more helpful to me is if you sat down with your experience and you said, "I would like to see X, Y, and Z in the standards."
I did.
Okay? I mean, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I'm just telling you what's helpful to me.
What's helpful to us is compatibility. I can't understand why we're shoving two-story homes next to one-story homes, and then being told that we have the right to go up a second story, but we don't want to.
So, basically, what you, what you are advocating is that second-story homes can't go next to first-story homes?
I think compatibility and within a neighborhood, we should be considering that these are all single-story homes, and all of a sudden, you're shoving in a two-story home and expecting that house to go higher because they need to be able to go higher, and the one next door to it to go higher.
Okay.
No, single-story, single-story, single-story. Don't shove in a two-story home next to us.
Bill Harkola?
I've been a San Carlos resident for 17 years and live on a corner property in Burton Park. In 2010, I completed an addition remodel, and the large part of the project was to capture the winter sun. We used to have a sun porch out there, little metal roof screened-in thing, and in wintertime was amazing with the plastic that went over the screen. It was really warm, really nice. So, we moved our kitchen and dining room area into that place, and it was wonderful. I also live next door to a soon-to-be-completed massive two-story addition remodel project. This project now shades my house from November to March. No more winter sun, forever shaded for me and anyone else who owns this property. And I'd like to make some points about this. The current city standards in the RDRC failed to protect my right to light. If San Carlos had a daylight plane similar to Palo Alto, which can be looked up, and it's 10-foot at the property line on a 45-degree angle, this line right here would demonstrate, and that's a side yard from the side yard property line, that I would have had, I calculate, two more months of that four months of sunlight on my property. That's significant in my case. The RDRC also approved a project that exceeded the maximum lot coverage by 312 square feet with no justification other than planning recommended approval. No explanation was offered, no RDRC challenge was rendered. I want to furthermore say that the city development process from planning to building failed to ensure that the requirements to develop this egregious structure were met. This project, it's excessive second-story massing, allowing a one-car garage, and building on noncompliant setbacks, not requiring a property survey, all hinged on one requirement, to keep 50% of the existing walls and 50% of the existing roof. It is plainly evident on this document that was the staff recommendation report that clearly states that the existing second, small second story on this house was 437 square feet is to be removed, and subsequently, a 1,321-square-feet addition to be put up. Clearly demonstrates on this document that with the dotted lines here, that entire new roof structure is above the old roof structure. Now, you could tell me, how can you save 50% of the existing roof and do this? This whole project with its noncompliant front garage, single-car garage, and the noncompliant setback, and I contend that the side yard setback on my side is less than five feet, and now I've got a massive house with huge overhangs. I don't know if San Carlos has an overhang standard, but that was, that's another issue. Again, so let me continue on with this.
If you could wrap up your comments, sir.
So, I'd like to conclude that, conclude that planning and building process to ensure compliance, needs to ensure compliance to, the 50% existing demolition rule is broken. I'd like to state that it's broken. And I actually did go to planning about it, and I have other information. I have letters, I went to the RDRC. I tried to affect my, this as much as I could. And how it got out of planning is beyond me, but planning relied on building to catch this, and building did not. And I don't know how it got out of plan check based on this. I'm truly myth. But anyway, it did. And then, when I saw the whole roof being demoed, and I asked planning about it, said, "If you have a reason to believe that more than 50% has been removed, you can come take a look at the building set of plans. There is a demo plan in there with highlighted walls the property owner and contractor agreed to keep. Please follow the attached instructions on how to request the building set of plans." I followed through with that, I never got a reply.
So, it's been about five minutes. If you could make your closing comments.
I think there needs to be proof of hardship to justify the maximum lot coverage. And there needs to be a daylight plane standard to protect San Carlos residents' right to light.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Sherba.
I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed changes. They're too lenient by not protecting residents in the loss of privacy, sunlight, and the quiet enjoyment of our properties. The commissioner asked for some specifics, which I jotted down during tonight's presentations. We still have an overwhelming 28-foot height maximum on two-story structures, no changes on those. That's an issue with me. The garage proposals seem to encourage second stories, and I think one of the parts of the presentation was to incentivize single-story construction. That I would be most open to, although there were no specifics in the presentation. I'm also taking exception to the reduced setbacks from nine feet to five feet. Whether it's a wing or not, it's still intruding on privacy and sunlight. I live in White Oaks and grew up in the neighborhood. In those days of larger families, I had six in my family, the current housing stock at that time, single-story ranch homes, is perfectly sufficient to raise a family. We don't need McMansions in White Oaks, Britton Acres, or wherever in this city. It's not necessary. We have a housing crisis in this area. It does nothing to alleviate that. All we're doing is overbuilding and ruining the charm of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Stewart.
My name's John Stewart. I've been an architect here for 36 years. I built my building on Laurel Street in 1987. I'm very involved in this. I wrote a letter with the other four architect-designers when we got asked to review the comments, and I went to a previous meeting also, and it's the first time I've heard tonight that we're going to be invited back to meet with staff. Nobody's even acknowledged our comments until now, which I'm pretty surprised about. I also was on the committee in 2010 that changed the rules.
Your fault.
So, I don't know if that's a good thing or bad.
Yeah, your fault. Thank you.
So, I'm not going to really go over the letter that we wrote. I think it's pretty specific. The major things were the house size being 60% to 70% FAR, I think, is way too high, and I think we need an FAR. The form-based code, all these models and everything are all on 50-by-120 lots, which really only covers White Oaks and Britton Acres. Nothing west of Alameda, or nothing north of San Carlos Avenue, or areas like Noel Drive that are steep. Let's see, I think maybe we need a couple of zoning districts. I know there's some restrictions on hillside properties, but I could see where that might make sense to have something like this for, for these lots. The garage placement, I think, is a big mistake because people are going to use the garage for storage, they're going to park one car in the driveway, and all the other cars are going to be in the street. At least now, if you have a two-car garage and you're using it for storage, you can park two cars in the driveway. And on a sloping lot, how are you going to have your garage halfway back or all the way back when you'd be either buried in the hill or over the cliff? So, I don't think that works. Lot coverage, I'm in complete agreement, it could go down to 40%, and I don't think it would really have a lot of effect. The existing homes to be remodeled has not been addressed. The setbacks with the, as the other gentleman pointed out, with the five-foot setback, now it's only 30% of the depth, but with this proposal, it could be the whole depth, it could be five feet away.
What did your comment about the remodels, what were you alluding to?
Well, how do we handle situations where the existing house would not fit within these rules?
Grandfather-- I'm just not conforming, right?
Right, not conforming.
Yeah.
So, how do you handle that? So, I'm sure my two minutes, this privacy thing comes up in every community that I work in, and the best way to do it is with landscaping. So, I would almost propose having a first and second-story setback of seven and a half or some bigger setback where you could actually put some landscaping in there. Five feet is really not enough to do anything. So, landscaping's kind of the best way. All the photos that they're showing are from Redwood City, I think, where they're, they're all bigger lots. I don't know where those houses are, but I don't think they're in San Carlos. I'd like to see examples of what people think are these egregious houses, and even if they're mine, I don't really care.
Well, a few of them are yours.
Probably.
So, staff, you're directed to find six of Mr. Stewart's houses as examples.
I'm sure it'll be pretty easy.
He's just giving you permission.
Let's see how the last seven years of--
I'm doing the three houses where the church got turned on, and I could use those as examples. I think they look pretty nice myself, but, um, let's see. I'm in favor of not calling it a daylight plane. I think the better word is a building envelope, because really, if you're on the north side, you're going to shade the south-side people, but the other four sides or three sides, you're not really a daylight plane at all. So, the wings really are going to drive up costs a lot because every corner in the building is going to be a lot more expensive. And the last thing, I guess, is what I'm looking at, I don't think is the ordinance. I think it's some kind of diagrams and stuff, and we have enough trouble here trying to figure out what the rules are, and everybody's confused. I've been through this presentation three or four times, and I think I got it, but I'm not quite sure. But I'd like to see the actual draft of the ordinance written into code. And my, I guess my last, last thing is to slow down and don't try to go to the next meeting and approve something and push it onto the planning commission. I have a client here where we're in, in design, and it takes months to come up with a design that fits all the criteria, and what do we do? Because we don't know what the rules are going to be. There was some talk at the last meeting, or maybe the one before, about a grace period till the end of the year where those of us that are in the middle of a project would be able to finish and get it submitted. So, does anybody have any questions to me, or?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stewart? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next up, Ms. McClure.
I must say that Mr. Stewart took most of my thunder, so, but, and I won't blame you for the 2011 changes in the code, but not you personally, I just blame the whole, the whole process because we went from being, I'm on RDRC, yeah, I'll let you know that. And I was on it before 2011, and we had some power. We had a 40% coverage instead of 50, and we had certain things that were written in the code, and they went away. So that when you compare it now with what we can do, it's very, very little. And I know that people in the community feel that we rubber-stamped things. Well, we don't have anything that we can point to specifically to do anything about it. So, I encourage you to take longer, really study it, but write into the ordinances some tweaks so that the RDRC can do something about this. But I do not agree with the compatibility that the people are speaking to. I want you to realize that people 60 years ago, I moved to San Carlos 60 years ago. We had different needs, and young people today want different standards in their houses. And it really isn't our right to take away their right to have a decent design. Maybe it's not a design that you particularly would pick out, but it's one that fits their needs. And I think we have to consider the future use as well as for some of us. I've remodeled-- I've remodeled, I've remodeled my house eight times. But that's when you're in the construction industry, you tend to take advantage of some of the expertise that you have around you from the men that are working. So I just really, I feel that people have a right to have a second story. I don't think that it's wise to design basements because the bay is coming up, the climate change. It's, I have a friend in the neighborhood that's behind where they're building the railroad track apartments. And she already has water under her house. Well, it's coming up. And it'll come up. It'll come beyond here. I guess there, I'm speaking for Sierra Club, and I'll quit right now.
Mr. Krab.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I am not speaking for Sierra Club tonight. I usually am, but I am not tonight. I'm speaking for myself. I'm a 29-year resident of San Carlos. I'm also an architect. And a few things. I have to admit, I have not been following this very closely. I've been more interested in big projects rather than the little ones. But I thought this would be an interesting look at. And I kind of learned a lot of things tonight, and I think the presentation was good. So a couple of things I want to do. Number one, I am not clear how any of this relates to additions to existing houses, which is 90% of the work in the town. If the existing house isn't that core shape, how does this all apply? And I think that really needs to be considered. How many brand-new houses are we building in San Carlos? There are some tear downs. There are a few lots. In my neighborhood, there are about three lots being built, two immediately next to me. So I think we need to look closer at existing additions and how this applies to existing additions. Second thing, I do believe in the need for sunlight and more so now because of the new requirement from the city, from the state of California about solar panels on roofs in 2020. How is that going to affect shading of like, single-story houses and so on, the two-story houses? And so I think the daylight plain concept needs to be looked at closely on this. I hadn't thought about it until we talked about it tonight, but that's something that I'm concerned. I don't like rear garages. They downplay the car, which I know, I hate, I love to downplay the car. But they take up a lot of room in the backyard. A lot of room where you can grow plants and trees and, you know, feed the animals and work with climate change and, you know, all that good stuff. And all we have is the car parked back there. And I don't quite see that that makes any sense to me. The, on the side makes sense if you have a lot wide enough. Let's see, other things here. The first people that presented with the peer cities, I was quite fascinated by that. And I quite frankly think that we should put a maximum square footage on the houses in San Carlos. I would say 3,500 to 4,000 square feet. Right now, I have a property right immediately next to me, which was a half acre. They subdivided it in two lots. They're building two houses, one 3,500 square feet, one 4,000 square feet. I was fortunate enough to be able to negotiate with the contractor and made a deal with him for privacy. And I've come out pretty well with it. But I had a good contractor I was willing to work with. But, you know, who needs a house over 4,000 square feet? It just, it just boggles my mind. And I think it's just, it's just ridiculous. And I don't think we need it in San Carlos. And we don't have very many in San Carlos. I don't see why we should have them now. I do believe in two-story additions. I'm sorry, I'll cut, I'll short, I'll have to.
No, it's, my watch is telling me to breathe. I must be stressed.
Oh, okay. Okay. I think that, you know, the people that have single-story houses, you know, to say that you can't build two-story houses next to them, I think, is a problem. I think it's kind of like, I've got it and I don't want the next people to have something. And I just don't like that. But I do think those two-story houses could be designed so that they try to respect the one-story houses in some manner, which was setbacks, daylight planes, landscaping. The contractor next to me planted 10 trees along his property line that are going to shade, you know, shelter my property from his house. And we just made that as a deal. Anything else I've got here? One minor little thing, very minor little thing. You have a description for porches and you were talking, suggestion to change from five feet to eight foot wide. I don't see any advantage in that. You're right, if you're going to actually use a front porch, an eight-foot porch is the way to do it. But in the city of San Carlos, how many people use their front porches? What we're doing with the front porches is really using to scale down the looks of the front of the house. But we're not really using them as front porches. And so a five-foot front porch, well-designed, will work just as well. And that's just adding square footage that you don't need. So I guess I'll wrap up with that. I'm sorry it's kind of scattered. I can't quite get my act together on this. Thanks.
You're fine. Ms. Ferreira.
Hi. I am a proponent of everything that has been said by the letter in the Architects and by Good Growth San Carlos. I think that the rear setback recommendations need to be supported. I think having the garage in the rear is only good if you have a big lot. I used to live on Orange in San Carlos. And it was, when I, when we bought that house, it was a remodel from, basically from the ground up. And it had a garage in the back and it was great. It didn't impose on anybody else's property. There were lots of trees back there. And it was a two-car garage. The lot could handle it. Everything was great. But on the street I live on now, which is Charlton, which is just a very small street, one block long, there's no way that any houses on that street, because they're very shallow lots, but wider, none of those lots could accommodate anything like that. I do have a two-car garage there and, no, I have a one-car garage there, which no car will fit in. And so every, it's got a two-car driveway, so we park on the driveway. And I think that's what, as was mentioned many times before, you know, many people do that. And I think that that's fine. But when you make the garage as, you know, one car, then that's forcing people to park on the street. And as we all know, street parking in San Carlos is extremely limited. My cross street is San Carlos Avenue. And people that live on San Carlos Avenue park on our street and all of the other streets around me, Beverly, Cambridge, Plymouth, because they can't park on San Carlos Avenue because it's become a freeway, well, not a freeway, but you know what I mean, at commute times. And some of the neighbors, you know, even complain and tell people not to park in front of their houses, which, you know, it's a public street. So then that causes stress and all that. I think that the chart that they showed about the other comparable cities clearly demonstrated, as far as I'm concerned, that the new standards put us up there with, the revised new standards put us up there with only Redwood City. And Redwood, I don't want to be the same as Redwood City. I mean, just go drive around in Redwood City. It's crazy. I mean, it's so crowded in Redwood City that it takes an hour just to get from, basically El Camino to the freeway or half 45 minutes anyway at commute times. We don't want to be like that. It's already getting like that with all the construction that's going around, going on around here. We need to try to, if we're going to build all of these things, then we're going to have to make bigger roads to get to the cars that are coming with all of these bigger houses. Because to, and nobody's talking about improving traffic or anything like that. When you build a big, huge house like that, everybody's thinking, well, big, huge house. They're only going to have one kid maybe or two kids. My neighbors across the street, I love my neighbors dearly. They built a big house, you know, years ago. And it's fine, you know, it's plenty of space all around it. No problem with lighter air or anything like that. They have three kids, great, wonderful kids. There's five cars there. They have a two-car garage. No cars park in there. I, we, you know, everybody loves each other. We all get along. But nonetheless, there's five cars parked on the street. So when you build houses that are even bigger than their house, where's it going to be? Six or seven cars? You know, and they either rent out rooms, do their Airbnb or whatever. You know, where are those cars going to go? So I'm, I'm, I just don't see how making houses, you know, as big as the biggest local community is going to do any good for us. And one thing I will say though is, the, one thing I complained about in one of the first meetings was that the notification process about these meetings was not that great. And I will say that the notification process about, that you guys, or I guess it was you guys did for this meeting, was fabulous. I got a postcard, I got emails, I got all kinds of communication, which I noticed you put some in here. And I want to really commend you guys about getting the notification out on these meetings. It's really been fabulous. And I do agree with everybody else that said this. We do need a plan for remodeling existing homes. And I think that a lot more could be done to improve this plan. I think that the wings idea is a good idea. But I think, as I understand it, the wings don't count in the FAR, right?
There isn't a FAR, but the wings don't count. So basically, there's a, the main body of the house is smaller.
Yeah.
But the wings, I mean, I won't say they don't count, but they're, they're not part of the main body. But if you could wrap up your comments, I'd appreciate it.
So I, I think that there should be a FAR, definitely. And I think that the wings should be included in the FAR. And I appreciate you spending all this time on this. And I really hope that you don't rush this thing through because I think it still has a lot more work to be done on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kromis? All right, well, you're generous. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's worked on these efforts. I know it can be challenging because there are a lot of different interests at stake. I think generally, I've heard a lot of different comments. And my feeling is we need to be careful not to play the role of big brother or mother and father to other people. There are different generations in San Carlos. We have older, younger, with different interests and desires. And there are a lot of different things that play into that. So we shouldn't be quick to judge other people's goals with their projects. So because nobody will ever agree on those types of standards, my focus is on the proposed standards. And my main position, which is, I think we need to slow it down more. When I read the proposed standards, what I see is ambiguity on a lot of different points. And that's concerning to me as far as rushing into approving anything. And perhaps I'm missing something in the course of planning speak. But being an attorney and reviewing these standards, I come out of it thinking, I'm not sure, on a bunch of different things. To begin with, I'm not sure what this applies to. Does this apply only to new construction or does it apply to remodels? Does this apply in a way where it could kick something that would have been a remodel into being new construction? For example, to satisfy the garage requirements? Inquiring minds want to know. I cannot answer that question reading the standards. Also, when would this go into force and effect? A lot of us have spent many, many thousands of dollars over the course of many, many months, especially trying to get a hold of our architects, who are so busy, in trying to figure out what our plans look like.
You want Mr. Stewart to answer your calls. Just let us know. We'll tell Mr. Stewart to answer your calls.
And now we must move faster than ever. But my concern is that there are a lot of people investing a lot of money and they need to understand what this impact is. And hopefully, whatever comes out of this, there is an understanding that we address people who are mid-process and give some sort of grace period for that so that people can get their plans in. The other thing is, when I read the proposed standards, again, I don't understand how this would apply to a hill lot. I live in the hills. I cannot comprehend how this garage proposal would work there. I really cannot, sort of having some sort of levitating garage in the back or having a very odd frontal proposal for the front facade. So I would encourage the, either a staggered rollout where we apply this to flat lots first and see how it goes. Or, again, just overall, take our time and really think through all the different considerations, any regular lot shapes. On the garage proposal, again, hill lots, I don't understand how that would work. I have a concern on safety as well. A lot of people have talked about the fact that the very foreseeable likelihood here is more cars in the streets. So not only do I find that to be completely unsightly, but I find it to be unsafe, especially for children. I'm one of those families with three children. Yes, that's right. And my kids are playing not only where we're located, but at other friends' homes. You see a lot of cars parked all over the streets. A kid runs out after a ball, another car's coming down the street, and they don't see the child. So we need to think beyond just the aesthetics, that, the problem that that would create, but also safety concerns and what that leads to for our community. The wings, again, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. But from what I've seen, I'm failing to understand how that's preserving the charm of San Carlos. And I will conclude there. Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Al, is there a way for staff to respond in like, a minute or two to the question about how the proposed standards would affect remodels versus new construction? Or is that a longer conversation?
So, and I'll ask Lisa to sort of help me out. But what we've discussed is that the thresholds for where existing non-conforming properties would trigger needing to come into conformance would remain the same. So if certain degrees of additions would still be allowable, given existing, it has to do with how much could be demolished or what percentage of new construction, correct, Lisa?
Yes, and I would agree. I think that's obviously a common question that we heard tonight. And I think if we had some sort of diagram to show, so like, we had diagrams to show how the proposed changes would have affected the construction of an entirely new house. What would it do to a house that's, that is existing and that wanted to expand? So maybe one of the things that we can bring back to the commission is a diagram to convey that. But getting back to what Stefan just pointed about, out where we would start, it was, we would do an evaluation of the existing home and know, and jot down where some of the non-conformities exist. But just like we have in our code today, if there's an existing house that has any non-conformity, we impose the current standards upon that, where they're able to achieve those. And where they're not able to achieve those, of course, you can allow additional expansion of a non-conforming component of an existing house. And although that seems like a mouthful, I think if we had a diagram to sort of explain how that would work, I think that would go a long way towards kind of showing the committee how that would work in a couple of different scenarios.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mickiewicz? Did I do that right?
No, that's okay.
Will you correct me?
I will.
All right.
It's Mitzvah.
Oh, my gosh, I absolutely butchered that. I'm so sorry.
Everyone does. I'm a relative newcomer to San Carlos. I've only lived here since 1989. And I live over by Burton Park. I have to say, first of all, I appreciate the presentation. So obviously represents a great deal of work. I work for the government. I work for the state of California. And I know what it takes to produce a report like that. But Stefan, you need to learn to speak English. I mean, absolutely no offense to you, but there ought to be a way to define whatever that was, plain, not light plain, window plain, whatever that was. I mean, I couldn't understand what you'd said, even after you tried to explain it because you explained it in more zoning ease. And I think that if you're going to present a report like this to the public, it needs to be presented in a way that we can understand the terms being used or they need to be defined. Anyway, I do this all the time. I have to go out and speak to the public about very technical things. And it's a skill and it should be put to use here. I attended the public meeting at the library. I actually appreciated the presentation there, Stefan. And I got that there is a tension between the desire that some people have to live in houses that are bigger than post-World War II, 1,400-square-foot mungolos, and those who want to maintain the historical character of this town, which I've lived in, as I said, for many years. I get that there is that tension and that is what this project is trying to address. At the same time, I heard Christians speak at that meeting and then I saw the presentation tonight. And I was astounded when I found out there is no maximum house size in San Carlos. I think that's insane. There should be a maximum house size. The lots are small. We shouldn't put massive houses on these lots. I'm not opposed to two-story houses, even though I'm in a, not only a one-story house, but a one-story house that has like, an eight-foot ceiling. And it's a lichlor, that is, it's like an eichler, but it's not an eichler. So it has an overhang. So we don't get a lot of light. So we don't get a lot of light as it is. So, you know, that, that, the, the loss of light and privacy is an issue. A two-story house went up next to us, and where I used to look at Sky, I now look at that house, just like in the, the picture there. I'm really here to talk about one thing in particular, which no one else has mentioned, and that is, and I brought this up at the public meeting, and you, Mr. Savay, Savai, how do you say your name? I don't mean to be rude. Savay. You made an assertion at that meeting that everybody gets notified about a project if it's within 150 feet of where they live. That is not true. There are only two ways you get notified about a project going up next to you. One, you have a standing request with the planning department, and, which I now have. Two, the project goes to hearing. If it doesn't go to hearing, and it doesn't, and you don't have a standing request, you don't get notified. So when your neighbor across the fence who came to your house and asked you to help pay to build that fence that needed to be rebuilt, then decides to put a, an addition on his house, doesn't feel compelled to come and tell you about it until the earthmoving equipment shows up in the backyard. Same thing with the other guy on the other side, who decided to put a second story on the house. Oh, and by the way, it was a second story, but we still weren't notified by the city that it was going to go up. The city doesn't notify you unless it goes to hearing. In my opinion, that needs to change. Neighbors should always be notified when the second story is going up next to them. It just should happen automatically. Neighbors are not going to tell their neighbors that they're putting a second story up, because they know the neighbors will be pissed off. Okay? So I don't understand why that doesn't happen. It should happen. I've spoken to the city council about this. I've written emails to the city council. I've spoken to Lisa about it. Nothing has changed. I, just, one other thing I want to say, and that is, I don't know why this never comes up, but bigger houses increase, have higher property values. Higher property values means higher property taxes. So the bigger, the more bigger houses this town has, the more property taxes the city gets. Okay? So that's fine, but there are other factors to be considered besides more property tax revenue. Thanks very much.
I have a question for staff, real quick.
Sure.
Just that.
Thank you.
So she mentioned about the notifications. Do we do notifications on remodels at the RDRC level? Or at the staff level?
Yes, so I answer your quest, both, there was two questions, I think, in there. So, so it is correct. Anything that goes to hearing gets noticed. And there are certain thresholds that are built into our current code that could essentially result in a proposal to do a second story that don't, and, and the overall square footage of that addition of a second story combined with the existing house doesn't trigger an RDRC hearing. That can happen. And so Mrs., I'm sorry, I can't remember how to, Mitzkevich is correct. So, in the second part of your question...
That was basically it.
That was basically it. So that is correct. Those are how our current standards sort of, kind of fold into the review process. And so when projects are reviewed at the staff level, while we encourage the applicants, or when we encourage applicants for every project to reach out to their neighbors, there is a venue to, to sort of take in those public comments the way there is at a, at a typical RDRC hearing.
So, playing the part of a neighbor, I can see where that would be upsetting, for that to happen, right? So is there, are there plans to make changes to that policy?
Yes, yes, yeah.
I think we've talked about this before, right?
Yeah, and that's a very easy change that we can do, and we're, and we're definitely looking into that, and also expanding the notification radius in general.
I thought we talked about that before.
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of what we've already discussed, and it's in the works?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. DeMete?
I know you're volunteers, but the decisions you make sometimes affect the living styles and life of the people that you affect. My house was next door to a large lot that was subdivided in 2015, and two wedding-style houses were built next door to me. Now, this house next door to me, I see, when I look out my dining room window, is, the wall is 10 feet away from me. It's two stories. And I've noticed, the past, now, since this 2015, I noticed my house has lost light, and also, my heating bills are going up. So because of this, I'm losing some of the heat that I used to have naturally. And also, it's disturbed my family, that my wife moved away. She now lives in San Jose, and I live here. And so this has affected me personally. So when you are volunteers, you make these decisions, sometimes it's not about the figures and numbers that you're quoting, but it's about the lifestyle that you're affecting. These houses are 50% coverage of the lot, so they are by, they, you know, it all was after 2011, when there was 40%. Also, I would suggest one other thing. My wife's pretty upset, too, with all the building going on, and I, I know this doesn't fit in with the program today, but I would suggest that there be some sort of restraint on building permits, or limit of them. Because within the two-block radius of my house, I've counted six homes that are being rebuilt, enlarged, or demolished. My neighborhood is becoming a, a construction zone, making it difficult for me to get home, even by car. In fact, going through town, I had to go around two or three detours lately. The debris boxes, the cement, the lumber, and contractor trucks are blocking our streets, and it's making life miserable for many of us. And I know it doesn't fit in figures, but it's lifestyle. And I'm afraid that you're taking away from the lifestyle that was San Carlos, and I've lived here for 40 years, so I can tell you, I've noticed the last few years, things are going downhill, as far as parking, congestion in the streets. In fact, a couple of years ago, it's actually, over, a little over a year ago, I was hit by somebody trying to beat, uh, beat the red light on Britton Avenue, and I was just trying to make a, a left turn, and I didn't see him, but he came out of the blue. And people are, you know, driving very crazily, because they're trying to get through our streets. And I noticed even St. Francis Way, a lot of people in my neighborhood, in White Oak area, are not very happy about all the, was it calming? They call it traffic calming techniques that they're putting on the street. And in fact, some of them even interfere with fire trucks. So anyway, I've been here a long time, and I haven't seen, you know, I've seen things going downhill, not, not ahead. So I'm sorry, but I have a bad report here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Chairman, Commission, Staff, thank you for holding these hearings and providing this information. I'm a six-year homeowner and resident here in San Carlos, and a 35-year resident in the Bay Area. I also have about almost 2 million square feet of projects that I have developed in eight states, and have done planning and design in hundreds and hundreds of municipalities. I'm here to, to try to balance the rights of homeowners to their properties with the desire to have responsible building going on here. I think some of the other speakers have mentioned that the, the need and use of houses from the 1930s and 1950s, when these homes were initially built, has changed a lot. And I think we have to allow property owners to work within a set of guidelines to build homes that they want to have. So I, I do strongly disagree with the single-car garage approach, for the same reason that others have mentioned. I think it'll cause a lot of problems. I also found a lot of contradiction in the suggestions of trying to put parking in the rear of a building, because at the same time, there was a desire to use the rear yard, or decrease the setback in the rear yard. I think that's problematic. And I, and I think it's overreaching for us to tell people how many garages I should put in the front, purely out of an aesthetic. I think it's only going to encourage more cars parking in the driveway. I vehemently disagree about the main body concept. I think it is grossly flawed and heavy-handed, because it's going to force very restrictive, expensive design. It creates a lot of circulation issues. Anytime you create crosses and wings in buildings, you now have to create hallways to feed those, and it becomes a very inefficient, inefficient use of the building. So I think we're going to actually not only encourage a second story, but we're going to encourage people to even more maximize, maximize the homes, and I think we've gained very little. I, I disagree about, about, I don't find the same objection to the, the so-called wedding cake style, or the double-car garage. I think we could address that by putting aesthetic requirements on what a garage should look like, and how it could be amassed and made to look more like the front of the house, or the facade of the house, rather than restricting that kind of parking. I do think that having built and designed and planned homes in many, many different municipalities in this area, I think we're being too liberal about what we're allowing to build. I'm a responsible builder, and the homes are, are exceeding what should be built on the lots. So within reason, I'd like to see is an open area to build within a, a building envelope that we could use, that has some level of restriction on it for both FAR and lot coverage. I think we need to address both of those, and keep it within some responsible limit. So I'm looking for a balance between the two, and I hope the, the commission will do that, too, and reject the current proposal. Thank you.
The last speaker I have is Ms. Timby.
Sarah Timby, I, I too am unhappy with the size of the houses, and, and while I appreciate the, the aesthetics that went into the thinking of this, I don't think it's going to satisfy the size. My main question, though, is I, I thought the planning commission was going to be changing soon, and because of that, I'm a little worried, well, for two reasons. I'm worried that you're going to push something through just to get it done, and I don't think that should be done. And I, and I would also like an answer, if I can ask for it, if, if that is true, that the planning commission will be changing, and how, how it will be, and when.
I would happily answer that question for you.
You're going to answer it.
I happily answer it. Yes, the planning commission is going to change dramatically in about a month, when three of us, Jesse, myself, and Angela, will be termed out, and three additional folks will be appointed. Let me assure you, there is nothing I would rather do than kick this can down the road, pass the time that I'm on the commission, if there is a rationale to do that. You do not need to be concerned about us making a decision, and we're solely in order to do it, before we get off. Trust me.
You just said you'd rather not...
As much, as much as we'd like to do that. As much I'd rather kick the can down the road.
I see that as, as a problem, and, and I'm bringing it up, because I really don't think it should be pushed through right now. I mean, there's, a lot, a lot of people here have already said, "This really is not going to satisfy..."
I, I agree with you, but just in the counterargument, not, I don't know what's going to happen, but the, the counterargument is, and this is what I'm concerned about, is that if we don't do something, then the things that people are complaining about are going to remain the same. So that's why, when I asked Christian, you, do you see this as an improvement? Because if it's an improvement, we can make incremental improvement, and then continue to make improvement in the future. The other issue, of course, is that when you do get a brand-new planning commission, and it won't be brand-new, there'll be two folks who are, who are still here, I mean, you lose the, the knowledge of the folks who actually were involved at the time that all of these issues came about. But again, no one's gonna, no one's gonna push anything through. It's either ready, or it's not. If it's not ready, we'll give it more time.
I, I definitely get the impression from, from today's talks that it's not ready.
Yeah, I, I hear you. Definitely the people here believe that it's not ready. That's true.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Hausken?
So, there's been a lot of much better comments said already that, than I can say, so I'm going to...
I think you could do fine.
I, I, I think I'll keep this relatively short. First of all, I appreciate all the work. I met with Al Savay, be almost two years ago now. It's been a lot of work. It's a good first start. I think you just said it very well, that the, the sentiments here are that there needs to be more time. I want to say, it, it's a huge job. I wish I knew what all the answers were, and I would just lay them all out for you. So, so I, I don't have the answers. I'm a San Carlos resident for 19 years. We live on Carmelita Drive. This is not about me. Our house is a lost cause. We have a neighbor on one side has a very high house. We love our neighbors. We bought into it that way, so I'm not here because I have a complaint, or because I'm going to do a construction. I just, it's just an important topic to me. And so I've taken some time to try to really understand it. I do want to bring up one point. I hate to make too much of a big deal out of it, but the, the shack that was, had seven members, four of the members were supposed to be regular homeowners. I heard that there was a lot of care went into it. Of course, it's a very long process. Three of the members were sort of experts, realtor, architect, builder. A simple Google search shows that one of the homeowners, supposed homeowners, is also vice president of a building company. So maybe all these people have, are experts. I don't know them. Maybe they're here. And maybe they're builders and architects with a conscience. But I just, it just seems like, well, there's a step right there in the process that somehow went wrong, I guess. I, I don't know exactly how to, they explain that. But again, I don't know the people, maybe it's all, maybe it's all okay. But I think, just my general sentiment, and you've been hearing it yourself, I don't have to tell you this. If you step back, I've seen that presentation twice. It's a very interesting concept. I'm understanding it better now. Apparently, I'm not the only one that's, that struggles to try to understand how it all works out. And then with these other lots in San Carlos, up on the hills, you have all these special cases. I think if you just stand back, sort of take the 30,000-foot view, it's clear that there's still more time that needs to be put into this process, and also, maybe actually pushing back some more on the, the requirements. And again, if I knew all the answers to this, I would tell you, but, but it's clear that it needs more time, and, and that there's a lot of sentiment against, at those, the, where it comes out, still, at this level. And it's been a lot of work. It's a lot of great work that's gone into it, but more work needs to be done. So that's all.
Thank you. So that's all the speaker slips I have. Was there anyone who wished to speak that hasn't had an opportunity to? And I keep pressing the beep button. That's not a good thing. All right. Was there anyone else who wanted to have an opportunity to speak who hasn't? If you want to come on up, and if you're willing to introduce yourself, that would be nice.
My name's Lisa Wellman. I'm a designer in San Carlos, been involved in many of the meetings, was at the original sign the form with the other architects in town. My main concern, well, you know my concerns, because they're in the meeting, in the, the letter that we sent in. The one thing that we haven't seen is a floor plan. You know, I think a really helpful tool would be to have the front line, the five, or whoever, you know, tell, tell us, or tell the, the consultant, what are the, the goals of our clients? You know, what, what are those goals, as far as their homes and how they live? And really put together some non-forms, like, let's get inside the home, because it's not all about just what it looks like. Our clients have to live in these homes, they have to work for their families, and I don't, that's one of the things we haven't seen. There's some really, you know, general forms from the exterior, but it would be really helpful...
From a design functionality standpoint?
Yeah, just for, and we know what our clients are asking for, and it may not be that they need or want these large homes, but there are some general purpose planning, design that we see in 90% of our clients, and I don't see those fitting into the, the, what's proposed today. And that's all. We just haven't seen that. And maybe we're going to see that at our next meeting, but we haven't yet. That's all.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Grimid. I've been here for three years now.
I've been here for three years now. This is great work. I like the presentation. I think we should not make the perfect be the enemy of the good. Right? No matter what proposal you put in, no matter how much research you put in, no matter how many experts you hire, there will be a bunch of people who will like it, and there'll be a bunch of people who will not like it. That's a fact of life, right? So I like your approach. Make this change and iterate over it, and if something else comes better, we do that, too. If we keep waiting on to get the best proposal out there, it's going to take you six months, a year, to get this out, then another six months, a year of grace period to get this out. You're looking at 2020, when the first house will be built with this. So my request to everybody here would be, yes, there are some changes which not everybody's happy about, or they're not clear about, but there are some changes which is great. So whatever you want to do, iterate this a little bit sooner. This process started in 2016. We are looking at 2018 May right now. And by the looks of it, we won't be implementing in a year or two. If you build, say, 10, 12 houses a year, there are at least four neighbors around it. So 40 neighbors every year, which will be not happy with what's going on. So there is some value to taking action, and there's some value to move forward. And iterate on things that don't work. And we can definitely have iterative process and say, hey, we tried these things. These four things don't work. Let's try, go back to drawing board. These three things work. Let's keep them intact. Things like, there's had been a big discussion on garages. Look about a remodel. Most people want 300, 500 square feet more in their homes. Having a smaller garage gives you an impetus not to go up. Right? Going up is four times more expensive than going backwards. Extending a wing, like somebody was mentioning it's expensive to have a wing. And a wing is expensive than a flat surface, but a wing is a lot cheaper than going up. So there are pros and cons to all these approaches, and I think we should weigh them in, and not look for the perfect proposal to come through. No city has a perfect proposal for any of these solutions. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Was there anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity to speak who'd like to speak? All right. Seeing none, what's the pleasure of staff at this point? Did you want to, did you want to work with the models some more? Did you want to present any more? Do you want us to provide comments now?
Yes, we'd like you to provide some comments. We heard a lot tonight, and we have some ideas in terms of what to bring back to the commission at the next meeting. And we will try and meet with the architects prior to the next meeting and get some more input from them. But is there anything specifically that you would like to suggest that you would like to see at the next meeting?
Well, I mean, I guess there were a couple of things. You know, one was the daylight plane issue, and whether instituting a daylight plane would appreciably impact in a positive way the issues that the folks are raising, not just on housing size, but also, you know, whether a housing plane requirement would result in more sun. I think that would be a good thing to see. If this were, if we were to adopt something, there were questions about a grace period, I think staff should propose a grace period. Obviously, we can, we could have an effective date of whatever we want, within reason, I believe. There was, there were some comments about the overall height of second stories at 28 feet, and whether that was too tall. I don't know what, you know, what the standard is. It sounds like 28 feet might be the standard, but if there's, you know, some meaningful decrease, like 27 or 26 feet, that's also within the standard. I mean, I think that's something to consider. There was a lot of discussion of the reduction of the side setback from nine feet to five feet, you know, whether that's a critical component of the main body wing concept, or whether you could maintain the nine-feet setback and have it still work in a meaningful way. There was a discussion about, you know, whether it would make sense to either only apply this to small lots or certain zones, either initially or entirely, whether or not staff has a view on that. You know, whether or not it would make sense to overlay some form of FAR on top of this, even if it's like, you know, a relatively high FAR, but just to set, you know, some limit on house size, some absolute limit, you know, whether that's something that staff would support. I think that's what I have.
David, I don't know if you can hear me, but I do have some questions. May I ask those now?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll do my best to keep it relatively brief. And it's okay if staff or the consultant do not have the answers for me at this time. You can feel free to email them to me or give them to me at the next meeting if that speeds things up for you. Okay? All right, I'm going to go ahead and start. Question number one, as far as protecting views, I'm curious which cities in the Bay Area protect views? And is there, what's the disadvantage that that may place on other property owners? The only Bay Area city that I know protects views, I believe, is El Cerrito. I could be wrong, and I'm wondering if you can answer that question for me.
Tiburon. No, I don't think so.
Okay. I understand that a lot of cities have had quite the fightouts about trees and tree views and obstructing views because of trees. And that's not specifically what I was thinking, but that's something we can circle back to later. Okay, next question. Can you explain, I guess, the rationale for why a view or a specific light ordinance was not considered? Was it just not feasible? Or did the committee consider it too much of an infringement on the other property owners? I'm just curious why that wasn't proposed or really considered.
I think there's a number of different reasons. But one of the key reasons is the initial charge was to reduce the bulk and mass of homes, but there was no charge to look at views. And the issue of views, even though we've heard, you know, over the years with specific incidents regarding views, it didn't come up initially. So we were not directed to look at views.
Okay. Thank you for that, Al. I do know that it's come up a lot, so that, I guess that surprises me, but it does help clarify the direction that the committee was going. I have another question about light, and I'm curious if a way to address some of the light issues might be some solar or solar panel protections? Was that considered at all? And do other cities have something around solar panel protections that might help preserve light?
It's very rare and usually in large cities. I don't know of anything. We can look at that, but again, we weren't directed to look at solar access. I think it's a completely separate issue from this. And, you know, we can, you know, take a look at it as a separate issue for the commission and provide you with information. But in terms of how it relates to this, you know, it's a whole different ordinance, I think, if we were going to, you know, consider it. Like, for instance, Minneapolis says that you can buy rights and things like that from other property owners if you want to maintain solar access. There's things like that, but locally, I don't know of anything. So it would be a whole other area. But again, we'd be happy to do that as a separate project, and at least provide you with information.
Yeah, you can see I'm trying to work a way around to try to address the light issue. So I appreciate that it might be a separate situation. I would love to have that addressed if it's more appropriate in a separate conversation. My next question is, did the committee consider a single-story overlay district for areas of San Carlos that have mostly single-story houses?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And I was, as I was reading the packet and listening, I understand that there have been some incentives to maintain single stories. And could you just walk me through them? Just so that I have them in my mind. I understand that there would be some reduce in setback requirement if the owner agreed to keep it single-story. Was there anything else that is an incentive to promote single-story houses?
Hi, Commissioner. This is Stefan. What we looked at was that the main body and wing envelope was likely too restrictive for one-story houses that were looking to build additions. And so we looked at patterns that we saw in San Carlos and decided that actually, on the smallest of lots below 50 feet, it's beneficial for those houses to actually get the full depth of the zoning envelope to build out to, provided that they're building a one-story addition. When we looked at our analysis as lots got bigger, our concern was that we were already allowing a very large zoning envelope at the ground floor, and that it didn't seem to be practical to continue to provide additional incentives for, to keep houses one-story. So we are thinking about maintaining that additional relief only for small lots to enable one-story additions.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. My next question goes to style, and specifically around the second-story setback decrease. I have to say, and I know I'm going to differ greatly from most of the commenters, but from what it looks like to me, the change in the second-story setback would lessen the encroachment into the yard. It would also allow for many housing styles that are currently technically not allowed in San Carlos, including Georgians, Colonials, Meditranians, Victorians, that all require second stories on top of the first. So I'm wondering, and maybe this is more of a comment than a question, that wanting to be really respectful of the view and privacy concerns that I think we all have, and that certainly the commenters had. But I would discourage removing that second-story setback outright. I mean, just as an example, every picture, every picture that you provided in the presentation has a full second-story setback all the way to the side. And of course, there are different ways that that might be helpful for reducing the privacy issues, but I wouldn't just cut that outright. I have another question that refers to the garage area suggestion. I think that the difference in configuration might, you know, might certainly work, but I echo the concerns of some of the citizens that this might reduce the available parking, pushing cars onto what are already crowded streets. And my question is, do you know of other cities that have made similar changes to the garage massing, and has that impacted their street parking?
We'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Sorry, guys, going through my notes here. Let's see. Oh, here's one more. In the architect letter that was submitted in our packet, the letter suggested the code be broken down into different geographical zones versus a one-size-fits-all standard. And I'm wondering if staff thinks this is feasible, and did the committee consider this?
It was generally talked about. You know, it is something that might be feasible. The lots, again, as we discussed earlier in the evening, the lots in the flat areas of the city have a tendency to be smaller and narrower than in the hills. In the hills, you do have slopes and things, and we heard concerns about how garages work. So yes, theoretically, this could work on a sort of a geographic basis, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And no, it wasn't reviewed by the shack.
Okay.
And can I add to that just quickly? I don't know if it was brought up during the course of the conversation, but it is noted in the staff report as one of the attachments. We did take an effort and spend some time to address some of the, what I was hearing is, you know, maybe misconceptions or not quite understanding what the proposals would do with respect to hillside lots. The city of San Carlos has a hillside overlay district. And one of the provisions, when you're in the hillside overlay district, is to allow the garage to be as close as five feet away from the front property line. And we're not proposing to change that. So I wanted to make that clear. But again, I think there is some value in really kind of going through a very strong filter, if you will, and applying the standards. But again, we're not proposing to change some of the flexibility and allowances that are part of the hillside overlay.
Thank you for that, Lisa. I appreciate that. Additionally, from the architect letter, a 12-month trial period was suggested, and that sounds like a great idea. But my question is, is this feasible? And are there any problems in doing something like that that I'm just not foreseeing at the moment?
If it was a 12-month period, you'd have to time it so something got built within that 12-month period? I mean, it takes, like, somebody said it takes about 12 months to, one of the architects said it takes 12 months to plan your, I think it was Mr. Stewart, that said, it takes about a year to plan a house. So what 12 months is it? And when would it start and end? And that kind of puts people in a very difficult situation, I think. But the grace period is something that we definitely, you know, at least from a staff perspective, we support that.
Okay. And a question, just, David Krab had mentioned something, and other commentators had it as well, as far as the maximum square footage versus FAR. And I was wondering if a maximum square footage house size was considered? And if so, why not? Or if not, why not?
The shack discussed house size and FAR to great extent, and it came up from the beginning to the very end. And the reason that, there's a couple of things that happened. One, it was discovered that the standards themselves resulted, had a resultant FAR, as you saw today, about 0.7, so 20% reduction from what we have now. So it did reduce, and it did put a cap, a natural cap on square footage. And the other reason was, they talked about FAR not necessarily being a reduction in bulk and mass. You know, you might get a smaller house in terms of square footage, but if you didn't address how the appearance of the house and the mass and forms of the house, then you'd still, you could have a smaller square footage house, but one that still looked like what people are referring to as a massive house. So that's why, and they debated and debated this particular issue, and felt that the form approach that is being proposed reduced the mass of the house, and also allowed for the families in San Carlos to have the square footage they need. And they talked about a lot of different things, like multi-generational families, that someone, one of the speakers got up and said that, you know, they have several kids. And so there's a lot of things that are happening in this, in our culture now that have an impact on the needs of the community.
And it's staff's opinion that that cannot be accomplished with an additional FAR?
No, we didn't make that opinion. No, we didn't say that. And if the commission wants to look at a cap or some kind of number, a numerical standard, that's up to the commission. But staff didn't have an opinion on that. We have brought forward the shack's recommendation.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification, Al. I have just one other question, and then I'll let other people talk. Sorry to speak so much. One of the comments that repeated about responsiveness, really by the RDRC, but I imagine the planning commission also, on the rare occasions that we get some of these houses appealed to us, that the neighbors were frustrated about the responsiveness. I guess that it seemed like the neighbors didn't have enough say. And I guess my question is, is there, is there a way to allow the RDRC and PC to be more responsive, to actually make some more design changes than I understand that we're really currently allowed to do?
Yes. And I think it also goes to the makeup of the commission, of the committee itself. One of the changes that was recently, just in the last week or two, made by the city council is the makeup of the RDRC has been changed. And one of the significant changes is that one of the people on the RDRC needs to be a professional architect. And one of the RDRC members had suggested in public comment that it would be nice to have people who can read plans on the RDRC and, you know. So there's been some significant changes in terms of the makeup, so I think making it a professional group, there would be a volunteer that is required to be a professional designer or architect. And maybe, you know, so I think those changes, you'll bring fresh views and professionalism to the RDRC. And I think with these changes, there will be some flexibility for the RDRC as well.
Great. Thank you for that. Those are my only questions for the moment. Thank you, everyone.
Only questions? Jeez. I think you covered most of them.
You know what happens when you let me talk first or second?
We're on California time, you realize that, right? I just had a few additions to some of this. I would love to see more detailed analysis and the data on the lot sizes in different areas of San Carlos. I think it's extremely relevant based off of what we're looking at. There's a lot of questions about that. I know there's huge sections of San Carlos that have 40 by 110, 40 by 120 lots. And kind of piggybacking on that is I think that we need more detail on those type of, what can be done in those type of lots. We've had 45 by 100, we had five, under 5,000 square feet, but we really didn't hit 40, 40 feet and exact details of what can be done on that type of lot. So those are two things. The other thing is, how about a few examples of non-conforming use and what can be done? If we can take a couple of examples of assuming that this gets implemented, how a non-conforming use, what, you had mentioned something about feasibility of certain things happening. What are the mechanics of that? You know, what is, what are the things that you go through to say, okay, this is not feasible, or this is feasible, this part is not conforming, this part is conforming? I think relative examples would help some of our thoughts and questions. I think that was pretty much it. Angela asked about 1,000 questions, so. And just piggybacking a little bit on, you know, San Carlos is pretty unique when it comes to lot sizes and characters of homes. You know, my feeling is that it, my current feeling is that it's very hard to just have one standard for most of San Carlos. So if it wasn't explored, I think it's, it would probably be, behoove us not to look at different sections of San Carlos as it relates to maybe possibly different standards. Because the one-size-fits-all, I think, is proving to be an issue. And lots of questions on that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's about it for right now.
The thing that was...
Oh, one last, one last thing. Sorry, sorry. How do, I saw it mentioned briefly on the second, the garage addition or the ADU above a garage, but how does, how do ADUs come into play right now, assuming, say, I'm trying to build a brand-new house and an ADU? You know, how are the calculations based off of the new zoning? How is that going to look? You know, I know that we, I think we're still on state standards of what ADUs are. We don't have any specific, I don't know if we have any specific standards for ADUs.
I was actually wondering, that's actually, I was wondering this similar thing, which is whether or not these new standards would negatively impact ADUs, since we're supposed to be looking at those as a way of encouraging additional housing.
ADUs are accessory dwelling units, just for those that don't know.
So, correct. Right now, as the commission may be aware, as well as the public, there's been a lot of publicity surrounding this, so we've actually had a little uptick in the number of accessory dwelling unit applications. But the state recently changed some of, or set into place some standards for accessory dwelling units, namely making accessory dwelling units a little bit easier to construct. One of those is being by right. If it's located above a garage, you can do garage conversions in a couple of scenarios. And then they set a maximum size for accessory dwelling units, with the caveat that if cities chose to, they could reduce that number. So what we're currently working towards is to sort of seeing where these new standards was set into, you know, would eventually fall, right? And then we would go into our accessory dwelling unit ordinance and then modify the standards and adjusting them where need be in order to align with the concerns that, you know, we've heard about privacy. And we usually tend to see that where accessory dwelling units are detached and located at the rear of properties. So for example, in the situations, and again, we already have the standard, we do allow detached garages in the rear of yards. So if somebody wanted to build a second dwelling unit on top of a garage, you know, they're limited to whatever footprint the garage currently is at, but that's something that we can definitely take a look at in, in kind of managing the overall size of a second dwelling unit that gets placed above a garage.
So what about a dwelling unit that's not above a garage?
That can either be attached or detached, and currently, the state allows those to be as large as 1,200 square feet. However, the city can choose to control the size of those once we do look into those provisions. And if that's the desire of the city, we would limit those probably, most probably consistent, or at least starting with what the current limits are at right now, which is, I believe, I think some of my current planners left the room, but it's a certain percentage of the size of the existing home. And then if it's detached, I think it's limited to 600 square feet as a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Mr. Bradley?
First, I don't have so many questions as comments, and I'll try to summarize what I heard here tonight. First of all, I think everyone is to be congratulated. You, the citizens, for showing up, asking these tough questions. The staff has done a great job. We hired the right consultant, and I'm very proud of this planning commission. And I'm going to miss the three that won't be here, but I'll be back, at least for a while. What I hear is, what I heard here tonight is, most of you who spoke don't want unreasonably large houses to be built next to you if it blocks your view, your sunlight, or interferes with your privacy. And I understand that, but some of you would like more controls over your neighbors and what they do with their land. There are legal limits to what can be done in a lot of these cases, of course. Not only is lot size important, but the shape of lots. We have really two distinct areas in San Carlos, at least two. The older houses on the smaller lots, flat topography, and up in the hills where it's steep and the lots are larger, and the houses are newer, so not as many of them are getting reconstructed or tear downs are rebuilt or added on to. Personally, I like the incentive of the single-story, in some cases incentives there that can be provided for. I hear you also, most people wanting a far but less percentage. I had the same thought as Angela on certain types of architecture that wouldn't fit into the wings, like Colonial, Monterey Colonial or Federal style. We don't have many of those being built now, however. I don't wish to endorse any regulatory requirement that will make any creative design of architecture more difficult for design professionals and owners to provide or even make it impossible. So planning is controversial. Planning is complex. Planning requires compromise, and I know you appreciate that, and we do too. Thank you.
Ms. Bergman?
I'd like a little bit more information on, I know we don't, I understand that we really can't protect views. I mean, we don't, we're not, we're not in the business of protecting all the views, but something about all this lighting going away really bothers me. And I'd like to see, one of the homeowners showed Palo Alto example where there was angle limit or whatever you want to call it. I would like to see examples of that and understand that better. And I believe someone else, I believe it was Mr. Stewart, I'm not sure, talked about a building envelope. I think one of the, yeah, talked about a building envelope. I'd like to understand that better in the context of light. I really think we need to look at neighborhood zoning. I don't see anyone here from Crestview except for David, you know, and I don't think he's complaining because he made a deal with his...
David got a good deal over there, so I don't know what he's complaining about.
I strongly support us looking at neighborhoods zoning, because I think that there really are distinguishable, I think that the neighborhoods are distinguishable in the different times that they've been built. And there's, you know, I could see like a newly married couple with no kids and maybe a cat wanting, you know, one of the smaller ones in lots built in the 1950s, right? But a larger home, you know, someone with a larger home needing a larger place. So I think we need to look at maintaining both those types of builds. I'm not convinced that what we're trying to put in place is not going to have an impact of some, either positive or negative, on the new solar ordinance that's being, that was just passed. I'd like to actually understand that better. What else? I'd like to echo that I think we need to let the people that are in limbo or people that are in the race period or something like that, we need to find a solution for them, get people out of limbo. And I personally want to talk to the Good Growth people. I want to talk to Al and our consultant. I want to talk to John. I want to talk to Bonnie, and I think there's, and I would like to talk to David, like in the next two weeks. So hopefully, I'll be reaching out to you guys, because I really want to, I got to be, I, this, I understand a lot of time was put into this presentation, but I don't know if it really conveyed to the layman what we're trying to do and if it really, I'm not sure it solves anything, and I really need to be convinced that it solves anything. Because I say, I know, you know, some people feel like make changes now and we'll make changes later. Well, it takes forever to make a change anyway, so let's make it the right change. And I don't care how much time we spend on it. I'm going to be here, and I want to make sure it's done right. So whether our friends here on the end are going to be here and, plus Angela is going to be here when this is decided, fine, if not, fine. I want to make sure we do the right thing. So I come away with this with a lot of understanding with what the, I mean, the community's been very clear on what they want. They want smaller houses on their, on their, on their lots, right? And we got to figure out a way to get there. And I'm just not convinced, and maybe someone convinced me after I talked to Al or our consultant, that this really does solve everything, but right now, I'm not convinced. So I'd like to talk to our resident professionals in the next couple of weeks before we meet again. Okay, that's all I got.
All right. Well, staff, what is your pleasure now?
That's it.
All right.
That's all, folks.
We got plenty, we got our work in orders and we'll move forward.
Okay. Then let's move on to item nine. Are there any reports on recent city council actions?
None other than what you've heard in the previous item, which was a recent city council action to address the makeup of the RDRC, again, which would now include, the composition to include a professional architect on the committee.
Are there any planning commission comments or reports?
None for me.
I want to thank you guys for all the hard work.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you very, very much.
Angela, anything from you?
Yes, I also really commend the committee, the consultant, staff, and the citizens who participated in all the previous outreach meetings and, of course, the meeting today for all your hard work. I look forward to continuing the hard work over future meetings.
As far as correspondence, we had some correspondence on our days. We had an email from Lori Torres, an email from Susan Tatum, a email from Judy Stogner, an email from Isabel O'Meara, a letter from Christian Vesia, a, an attachment from Christian Vesia that had some comments from residents, an email from Sarah Timby with an attached news article, and then there was also correspondence in our packet. Other than that, is there any correspondence?
No further correspondence, and that is consistent with what staff has received as well.
Are there any planning staff comments, reports, and/or updates of current projects?
None for this evening. We will just confirm that the direction that we will proceed with is to return on June 18th with the continuation of the study session.
Well, I don't know that that's necessarily direction. I mean, I think you certainly have discretion to do that, if you believe that that's best and we're prepared to meet again and discuss this again, if staff believes it's ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. The meeting is adjourned.